Everyone, call the City Council to order at eight o'clock on Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have nineteen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the special City Council meeting, September 29th, 2023.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second, accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, October 2nd, 2023.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file as well.
Motion made in second, accept and place on file the October 2nd meeting minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number three.
Communication from Jen Robichaud of Barlow Signs on behalf of Kennedy's Restaurant and Market regarding a request to withdraw without prejudice, the application for installation of a freestanding EMC sign at 247 Maple Street, order number 23-100-8963.
Counsel Robi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the request to withdraw without prejudice, the application for a sign.
Motion made in second to approve the request to withdraw without prejudice. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the application is withdrawn without prejudice, 11-0. Agenda item number four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for Barlow Signs on behalf of Kennedy's Restaurant and Market for installation of a freestanding EMC sign at 247 Maple Street, order number 23-100-8963.
Counsel Robi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to cancel the public hearing and file the order?
We'll just, yeah, we'll just cancel the public hearing. So motion made in second to cancel the public hearing since we've just approved the withdrawal without prejudice. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the public hearing is canceled, 11-0. Agenda item number five.
Now is the time for the rescheduled public hearing on the application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Somer Landscape Inc. to construct and operate a landscaper's yard at the Airport Industrial Park at 59 Airport Boulevard, Unit 16, order number 23-100-8965.
Okay, the public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And fourth, questions from the City Council. As a reminder, we'll limit comments to three minutes, and we'll start with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Mr. Falk.
Thank you, President. I'm seeing councilors for the record, Brian Falk, Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Somer Landscape. With me tonight is owner Angelo Olivata Cruz, and also with me are representatives from Capital Group, which is developing the Airport Industrial Park. Seeking a special permit to operate a landscape contractor's yard at the industrial park. Somer is looking to relocate their existing business in Marlborough to a brand-new facility at the park. Somer Landscape has operated in Marlborough since 2005, currently located at 729 Farm Road. Somer would purchase a 30,000-square-foot exclusive use area within the park with a 4,000-square-foot building and space behind the building for material storage. Vehicles and machinery would be stored in the building, landscaping materials would be stored behind the building. This is an overview of the exclusive use areas in the park. Ours is Lot 16, which is noted with the circle of the 16 in it. Lot 17, which is just to the left of our lot, is the home of De Silva Landscaping, which received a special permit for a nearly identical use in 2021. Similar to De Silva, our landscaping plan and site plan provide a well-screened yard. As required by the zoning ordinance, the yard must be screened so that vehicles, equipment, and materials are obscured from view. Materials stored outside must be located on impervious, dust-free surfaces. This is the existing De Silva site. Ours would be virtually identical. Ours is actually the vacant lot that you can see just above the De Silva building on that image. And like that site, we'll have a large paved area to the rear of the building for storage of materials. This is another view of the De Silva site. Again, ours would be surrounded by this same vinyl fence, which exceeds the city's five-foot screening requirement for these types of uses. We met informally with the Site Plan Committee on October 10th and received some comments regarding protection of the lawn area to the rear of the site. With your materials, and I distributed tonight is a draft special permit decision with conditions of approval, and those are fairly standard with these types of uses. We've approved, this will be the fourth in the industrial park. This draft decision is a red line. What I did was I tracked the changes against the De Silva decision from 2021, so you could see what the differences would be, and I think you'll see the conditions of approval are virtually identical. If approved, we would return for formal site plan approval with the Site Plan Committee. What the Site Plan Committee has done is for each one of the new fit-outs within the industrial park, they've updated the master site plan decision for the property. So if the special permit's approved, we go back to the Site Plan Committee for some additional conditions. Look forward to your questions tonight, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Good evening. As Attorney Falk mentioned, Angelo is currently located at 729 Farm Road. My name is Gina Di Matteo. I live and operate, I live at 721 Farm Road and operate 729 Farm Road. And I'd like to ask the council to approve and speak in favor. Angelo's been a great tenant. He's very clean. He operates a great business. Again, it's another local small business in Marlborough that's having an opportunity to grow and has a place to grow. So again, I'd like to speak in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Any other members of the public speak in favor? Any other members of the public speak in favor? Any other members of the public speak in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Questions from the public?
Hi, Steve Peck from Marlborough. I may have had half my answer just now, but I was wondering what's going to happen to 729 Farm Road? Is it going to sit as a vacant, empty lot now?
So that's really not the purpose of the public hearing. That's someone else's, the tenant or the landlord will make that decision.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Public speaking in opposition. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors. Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the conditions that were provided, I'm glad to see that the indoor storage will be limited to both minor repairs. My question is, what are minor repairs considered by the applicant?
Yeah, it's ultimately a question for the building commissioner, but our concept is, you know, replacing blades, replacing taillights, those types of things that you would do. Engine repair, transmissions, certainly not. That wouldn't be a minor repair to the fleet.
Well, in the interest of stormwater management, I know during the building you're going to have an expert on site to overview it, but after it's built, it's good to see under your other condition that it notes that you will have a floor drainage system designed to prevent fuel and other hazardous material from entering the stormwater area or the sewer system. And that's what brought the question to mind was, are you doing oil changes and those type of things at the garage?
Right, that's not the intention. Minor repairs of the equipment and fleet.
This would be an accidental spill gas tank let's go or something like that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Counsel Anders.
Mr. President, just a quick comment. Okay, the whole project down there exceeds my expectations. I drive in there frequently. I think it looks pretty good. I'm a little concerned about that airplane flying over there in your approach. Don't worry about that. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Anders. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Attorney Falk. Agenda item number six.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to amend Section 22 Retirement Community Overlay Districts to include MAP 39, Parcels 5 and 26B located on Robin Hill Street, currently located in the LI District, to accommodate an over 55 community combining both townhouse and multifamily components for new condominium ownership neighborhood. Order number 23-100-8964.
Similar to the last one, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the City Councils. And again, I'll remind you, comments for or against limited to three minutes. With that, we'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speak in favor, starting with the applicant, and again, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, President. I'm seeing councilors for the record, Brian Falk, Attorney Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of Pulte Homes of New England LLC, a home builder based in Westboro. With me tonight from Pulte's Westboro office are Mark Mastriani and Essek Petry. Also with us is our transportation engineer, Bob Micho from MDM Transportation in Marlborough. We're here seeking a zoning map amendment to allow a retirement community at 582 Robin Hill Street, also seeking an amendment to allow this retirement community to have a mix of townhomes and garden units. This would be an over 55 ownership community geared towards empty nesters in Marlborough and surrounding towns looking to downsize while continuing to be homeowners. We think this is a great opportunity to address key issues in the local housing market, freeing up three- and four-bedroom homes in the city for younger families and creating new growth that has little to no impact on city services. As an ownership community, the city will have residents with a strong connection to Marlborough, many of whom will be existing city residents downsizing in Marlborough. As an over 55 community, our initial estimate is that this project would have a net positive impact to city finances of a million dollars a year with almost no new school-aged children and self-contained neighborhood with its own roads and recreational facilities. This is also an opportunity to secure this area as a residential neighborhood. The property is currently zoned limited industrial. That zoning district has a number of as-of-right commercial uses that would not be the best fit for this quiet part of the city. Robin Hill Street is best used for residents and not for commercial traffic. With this property for sale and zoned limited industrial, we think the best fit for the land is as a residential use, and this is a residential use that can benefit the city in many ways. We also believe that Pulte Homes is a great option for Marlborough. The company has a strong local track record, building many high-quality communities in neighboring towns. With that, I'm going to turn to Mark Mastriani to introduce you to Pulte. Mark?
Which one do you have? Just the arrow? Yep, just that one. Okay. Good evening. City councilors, Mr. President, city clerk, members of the public. Just want to introduce myself. My name is Mark Mastriani. I'm one of the representatives of Pulte Homes of New England. Pulte Homes of New England is a local division of the Pulte Group, which is a large publicly traded home builder. Our corporate office is in Atlanta, Georgia. And the only reason I mention the Pulte Group is because it provides financial strength and capability for our home-building office here in Massachusetts. Pulte Homes of New England is completely self-funded. We don't require any third-party financing of any types, which allows us to start and build and sell and complete all of our projects here in Massachusetts with that financial strength. That's all I really want to talk about, the Pulte Group. I'd really like to focus on Pulte Homes of New England. So I shoot it there. Shoot. So Pulte Homes of New England. So our office, where we do all of our home building operations, is right down the street, right down 495, about 15 minutes on Flanders Road in Westboro. We've been, we've been building in Massachusetts out of this Westboro office for about 30 years in Massachusetts. We've, we've built and sold over 8,000 homes during the last almost 30 years. All of our residential communities in Massachusetts, in New England, are a home ownership. Our company does not do any rental development at all. We have a very experienced local building team. All of our employees are local residents. I, myself, I live in Northbridge, and I like to tell the people I've met that my previous home was in Marlborough, so I consider myself a local here as well. Here's a list of our active projects that we're currently building out of our Westboro office. And I'd like to just point out a couple really important ones. So on the top there, there's a, there's a project called Upton Ridge. That's 139 attached townhomes right down the street in Upton. And then number, number, number six on the list is a project we like to call Chauncey Lake, Del Webb Chauncey Lake. That's over on Lyman Street in Westboro, again, not too far from here, about 15 minutes from here. And that's a 700-unit community with what we call garden-style buildings. And the reason I like to point those two communities out is because they include types of housings that we're proposing here in Marlborough. So if any of the councilors, if anybody in the public, Mr. President, would like to tour, you know, any of the Pulte Homes projects to see a flavor of the quality and the type of construction we'd like to propose here in Marlborough, those would be excellent examples to go see. And I'd like to offer, at any time, I'd be happy to give a tour of anybody who would like to see them and touch and feel our projects to see what type of quality and construction we can bring to Marlborough. And then there's a number of other communities on the list. There's another two communities in Grafton not too far from here as well. So I like to bring up this list as well because Massachusetts is a really small, small area. Everybody knows everybody. Everybody talks. And we're really proud of the reputation that Pulte Homes of New England has developed by building in all of these surrounding towns and cities over the years. So, you know, I would implore all of you councilors, if you know anybody in these other towns and cities and want to, you know, call and check up on the reputation of Pulte Homes and the team that you see standing before you, I think that would be an excellent idea. I've been at Pulte for 20 years. I've been involved in all of these projects and many more. You know, my whole team and myself are really proud of the communities that we build, and we're really excited for the possibility and the opportunity to build here in Marlborough. We haven't, we haven't built here before, and we're really excited about it, and we'd love to be able to work with the public and to work with you and through the, through the process. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Essek Petry, and he'll talk more about the project that we're proposing here in Marlborough. Thank you.
Yeah, next slide, please. Back one more. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, council members. Again, my name is Essek Petry. I work with Mark in the land planning group. Sorry, can you hear me in the back, back there? Sorry. We work together in the land planning group.
Ken, Essek, the closer you are to the microphone, the better. And you can take it out of there if you want to.
Geez, you're too short, huh? I haven't heard that before. All right. Thank you very much. So we are very excited to work on this project. And before I go into the details of the project itself, I just wanted to touch upon the team of professionals and experts that we've put together to work together with us, to work with the community and the city on this project. First is Civil Design Group will be our site engineer, civil engineer. They're based out of Andover. They're a firm that we've partnered with through a lot of our projects. Matt Leidner, who has joined us here tonight, is someone that, as this project advances, you'll be familiar with, and he'll certainly be working with us and with the city on the details of the design. Myrick O'Connell and Brian Falk will be handling all the legal services. Clearly, I think most of you here are familiar with Brian as he does a lot of work with various city departments, in particular the council. VHB will be handling all of our natural resource evaluation and impact analysis. They've actually already been on the site a few times over the past couple months delineating and verifying wetland locations, and they'll be working closely with Priscilla Ryder and the Conservation Commission to work through those natural resources. And MDM Transportation, local firm based out of Marlborough here, and Bob Micho has joined us, and Bob will be spearheading our transportation impact analysis. We recognize that the traffic is going to be a focal point of this, of this project, and we want to make sure that we get it right. And Bob and his team are trusted advisors within the city, and they will work with us and work with you as we walk through the project, on that critical part of the project. And then finally, Cofflin Environmental Services, they handle all of our stormwater and utility infrastructure design and analysis. And we've actually started working with Marlborough DPW as far as understanding the utility connections from a water-sewer perspective that is available at the site. Excellent. So I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of context before we dive into the details of the site. The project area is actually made up of two parcels on Robin Hill Street. They total approximately 28 acres. They're generally right across the street from the Jacobs Road intersection. The Jacobs Road intersection itself is about a third of the mile from Bigelow Street to the east, and then about a mile and a half, or a little more than a mile and a half, from the Hudson Street-Solomon Pond Mall Road intersection to the west. From a Director Butters perspective, to the west is the Hillside School, as well as 554 Robin Hill Street, and to the east is National Grid. Next slide. So this image really shows the project and the site kind of zoomed out, and it really demonstrates what I feel is a, it's a great location for residential development. We really feel that residential use fits in this neighborhood and in this context much better than other potential uses. In addition to the site, the actual parcel layout and the site layout that we've shown, it really minimizes direct impact to Butters. Once complete, this concept, as it's shown, represents approximately 25% lot coverage, and really over a third of the site itself would be completely undisturbed, and there would be remaining ample forested buffers between the proposed buildings and the adjacent residential uses as well as the school. Next slide. Now, just to take a more closer look, zoomed in at the proposed project, again, you can see the project fronts on Robin Hill Street, across from Jacobs Road, and then it approaches back towards I-90, which is about 1,000 feet, or, excuse me, I-290, which is about 1,000 feet towards the back. Again, the project area is approximately 28 total acres, and this is a 55-plus, age-restricted home ownership community. Just walking through the site layout briefly, the access driveway, we have it set up on this concept, is roughly across from the Jacobs Road intersection, weaving back towards the back of the site. It'll be townhouses, townhouses along either side that'll be set back from Robin Hill Street, leading to three garden buildings, as well as some amenities, including clubhouse and some pickleball courts. That area is roughly 700 feet off of Robin Hill Street with a lot of that forested buffer between the street and those buildings remaining. Then that driveway would follow parallel to 290 to the west with townhouses on either side of it, leading to another pod of townhouses in the northwest quadrant of the site. That's, that area, as you can see, Robin Hill Street actually veers to the southwest away from the site in that location, and that leaves those buildings, you're roughly 700 to 1,000 feet of forested buffer between Robin Hill Street and that portion of the project. Each of those garden buildings, they would include an underground parking area, which to help reduce surface parking. The townhomes are spread throughout in a series of duplexes and triplexes, each of which has two garage spaces as well. Next slide. I apologize for the minor detail on this project. It's not meant for you to read the detail of it, though. It's really just more to demonstrate the due diligence that we've already begun for this project from a utility connection perspective. From a water, public water perspective, we plan to connect to the existing water service in Robin Hill Street. Some of you may have noticed that we were out on site in late July with the city water department, conducting a hydrant flow test. We conduct that test to understand what pressures are available for the water system in the area, and that coupled with additional communication and coordination with the town water department, or, excuse me, city water department, we have determined that there is ample pressure and capacity to connect to the municipal water service in the location. From a sewer perspective, we plan an internal system that will service the development that would connect to the existing municipal service system. Across Robin Hill Street, in Jacobs Road, there's an existing manhole close to the Jacobs Road-Robin Hill Street intersection, and our partner Cofflin Environmental has coordinated with city sewer department and identified that there is significant, excuse me, significant capacity within the existing gravity system to easily accept the flows from our proposed project. Next slide. Thank you. So as I noted previously, we are planning an amenity package for the homeowners. The primary amenities would be tucked towards the back. The primary amenities would be tucked towards the back of the community, and we'll offer a modest clubhouse that'll provide interior and exterior gathering spaces, sized appropriately for the community. It would look very similar to the red building in the upper-left picture there. That's from an existing community that's under construction in North Reading. It's a one-story, sixty-by-forty building that includes a gathering room, an exercise room, and then a quiet room for phone calls or small meetings. In addition, there would be an outdoor patio that would have some tables and chairs and a couple propane grills. We are also proposing two pickleball courts adjacent to the clubhouse, because it's apparent that we cannot propose a project in a community without offering pickleball courts. But these amenities will be located, it works out well for this site, they're centrally located for the members, the homeowners of the community, but they'll be buffered from adjacent users so that it's really just interior to the homeowners for this project. Next slide. Thank you. So as we're going through the details of the project, I just want to take a quick second to talk about sustainability and green building. You know, over the past twenty years or so, these have really been buzzwords in fringe markets, but they've really taken on, you know, mainstream concepts that are driving decisions in our everyday life. And Pulte weaves this into the mindset of every phase of our project in a responsible way. You know, we're committed to building environmentally sensitive communities. It starts from our land acquisition process, and it's evident through our planning into construction and then operation. During each phase of our project process, we work to identify and manage risks and opportunities as it relates to the environment, such as from a site planning perspective, the inclusion of the underground parking in those garden buildings not only reduces the overall footprint of the site construction, but it also significantly decreases the amount of impervious surface that we'd be introducing to the site, which in turn reduces the amount of stormwater that we would have to manage and deal with. Building electrification. These buildings will all be completely electrified. That means electric hot water heaters, electric heat pumps, means no natural gas, no oil, means no building emissions created from this site. Each of those garden building garages will also be equipped with electronic vehicle charging stations, as well as the surface lots will each have EV charging stations. Each of the townhomes will also be wired to support EV charging on their own as well. From low e-glass windows to advanced insulation and smart appliances, we are integrating new building products and practices to make sure that each of our homes are energy efficient. Our home plans have been optimized for material content and ease of construction, which allows for a more efficient use of building materials, but it also minimizes job site waste. We install low-flow fixtures in kitchens and bathrooms to ensure water conservation, and we also vow to strict compliance or actually even exceedance with stormwater management standards, including low development, excuse me, low-impact development systems that promote responsible vegetation growth and avoid the discharge of pollutants and eliminates the potential for these to be washed away during rain events. We pride ourselves on building sustainable developments that are compatible with the neighborhood, respectful of the area's natural resources, and really reflect the community's goals. Next. So now we're just going to go through a couple samples, renderings, and we have some photos of what these buildings look like in existing projects today, and these would be very similar to what would be built at the Reserve at Robin Hill. As Brian mentioned, these homes are designed to meet a market and demographic that's really currently underserved in the city of Marlborough and really in the region as a whole. Next slide. We're going to go quick on these, Steve. Thanks. So again, they're providing existing city of Marlborough residents the opportunity to downsize and stay in the city, stay near family, stay near what's familiar, and stay near what's comfortable. They're designed to provide an opportunity to maintain that home ownership without all the home maintenance. Next slide. And, you know, these footprints in particular, being an age-restricted community, they're designed to offer one-floor living. The garden units, the garden buildings themselves, have elevators from the garage floor all the way up to each individual floor. And the townhomes themselves are all first-floor master suites with a second-floor bedroom and bathroom for grandkids or other visitors. Again, these are all home ownership homes, not rentals. They're homes that people are proud of, and these are people that will have a positive effect on the neighborhood, and they'll have a positive economic impact to the city. So before I kick it back to Brian, recognizing, based on our conversations that we've had with residents and neighbors, I'd like to ask Bob just to come up real quickly to talk a little bit about his role from a transportation impact analysis perspective, recognizing the importance of that. You probably go to the next slide, please. Thanks.
Thank you, Essek. Council members, for the record, Robert Micho, Principal of the MDM Transportation Consultants based here in Marlborough. I don't have any formal presentation to make, but I will say that as a local business owner, someone who's very much engaged in the community, that we're very interested in making sure that this project is designed and built properly to a standard that we hold near and dear to our own company standards, and that is the highest level of safety with the least amount of impact possible for a project like this. Essek mentioned that this project is being targeted for residential for a good reason, and that is it, in the context of the surrounding neighborhood, really wants to be residential, not industrial as it's currently zoned. In that regard, we've initiated due diligence to understand the ground conditions that need to be planned for. We know that Robin Hill Street is a local, low-volume roadway. It's somewhat of a country roadway. We've begun to inventory volume conditions, traffic speed conditions along the roadway. I will say this, it is classified officially as a low-volume local roadway and will remain as such with this project, based on its characteristics and what it's likely to add for traffic, which is going to be modest. We also understand that there are challenges that relate to safety, particularly travel speeds along Robin Hill Street. I know just this week I observed speed trailers set up along Robin Hill Street, which are indicative of concerns relative to travel speeds. And in our own observations and data, we see the same types of trends. But we also see opportunities in the community to address those pre-existing issues through a project like this. We've worked with Pulte now for about twenty years. Our firm has been located in Marlborough since 2003. I've been in the business now for more than thirty-five years, and our reputation precedes us. We like to do things right, correct. We like to listen to community concerns, and through the upcoming process, very much look forward to listening more than speaking. So we have the community's interests at heart because we are a member of the community, and we look forward to working with the city in that regard. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I promise we're wrapping up. Just a few final things I wanted to mention. Just in terms of the local approval process, where we are in that process, and where we are is the very early stages. The property is for sale, and Pulte is interested. As a home builder, Pulte is looking to buy the property for this type of project, not for a commercial use. The zoning ordinance currently allows over fifty-five communities in the limited industrial district, but the council first has to amend the zoning map to allow that. So that's where we're at, looking to have the zoning map amended, which the zoning ordinance calls for as a permissible use in a limited industrial district. The zoning also requires that retirement communities like this have to be either townhouse-only or multifamily-only. Our zoning amendment would add some flexibility to what the council can approve, so you could have this type of project, which has a mix of housing styles and housing sizes and price points. So we're at the zoning amendment stage, looking for an option for this type of a use. If we're successful with the zoning amendment, we have three local permits that we would be required to obtain. First, special permit from the city council. Second, a wetlands permit, order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And third, site plan approval from the Site Plan Committee. Those three permits is where we'll really get into the details of what this project, you know, can be, based on that zoning amendment that we're looking for right now. We're not going to have answers to every question tonight because we're at this early stage. We're doing our due diligence, and part of that is this use needs a zoning amendment, and so that's where we're starting. We held a neighborhood meeting about the project last Wednesday so that those living along Robin Hill Street and adjacent neighborhoods can meet us and hear about the project, open the lines of communication, make sure they had our contact information, make sure they got an early look at the project before we came in for this hearing. We've also held individual meetings with our closest to Butters. So again, at this stage, we're looking for the city to make this an option on this property. If the council agrees, we move on to that more detailed work. We think this would be a good option for the site. We think Pulte would be a good partner for the city and for the neighbors, with a great track record of doing excellent work in this part of Massachusetts. This project, as we mentioned, would also allow Robin Hill Street to stay residential, which we think is a better fit for the road and for the neighborhood. Allow homeowners in Marlborough to downsize, freeing up homes for young families in the city. And it gives the city new growth without straining the school system or municipal services. Look forward to your questions tonight, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. That concludes the presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Yes, sir. You guys step up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I thought you could take someone else.
No.
I'm curious, how much would the units cost?
Excuse me, sir. Sorry. Name and address.
Oh, my name is Ed Lattessa. I am a board member of the Hillside School trustee. I'm wondering how much will the homes or townhouses cost, on average?
So you're not going to love the answer, but there will be a wide range, just due to a variety of factors. Just, it's typical of this type of community in that there's a wide range of homes that will be offered as part of it by design, and by design that diversifies who those homes can work for. So, you know, somewhere in the range of, from the, on the lower end, in the four-hundred-thousands for some of the garden-style condos, to upwards of approaching between seven-hundred and eight-hundred thousand for some of the townhomes. And again, this is going to vary greatly as we get into site design, and so the garden buildings in particular, a first-floor unit that may be looking at, you know, something less desirable is going to be a much different cost as opposed to a fourth-level corner unit, which may be a two-bedroom. These are all one-bedroom or two-bedroom. And within each of those themselves, there's going to be options for each of the homeowner to spec out their home. So again, within each unit themselves, there's going to be options, really broadening that range.
Okay. So the sellout, the total sellout is going to be, what, on average, for you guys to make money? Do you sell the two-hundred-and-seven homes?
It's really hard to say that right now, as we're still doing a lot of due diligence to understand the site characteristics, which is really going to drive the cost associated with the construction. So to come up with that number, it's challenging to do at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paul.
Hi, Paul Goldman from 137 Second Route. I'm curious, the design shows a fair amount of lawn, and I was wondering what attention you give to native plants in minimizing the amount of lawn to save water, reduce pesticide, and fertilizers?
And that's a great point. And, you know, as I mentioned in that sustainability slide, you know, from a low-impact development, stormwater management perspective, there will be plenty of opportunities to introduce that type of vegetation, to not only minimize pesticide use, but also to support stormwater management through, you know, the vegetative, growing the appropriate types of vegetation. But that's a detail that we will certainly be working with, you know, as we, you know, hopefully get to that point. But those are things that we do like to incorporate in the, you know, in the site planning.
And so do you typically use primarily native plants in your designs?
Absolutely, as far as the vegetation.
Because I know it's a leads opportunity for you. So, very good.
Yeah. Do you want to speak specifics on that?
No, I just wanted to add one thing. So not mentioned here is we will have a landscape architect that will be part of our team. It will be Bowler Engineering, a landscape architect named Leslie Fanger. She always specifies local native plants for all of our plants, and they're also drought tolerant. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? There's a question? Absolutely. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Hank Chase from Hillside School. I'm the head of the school. I'd like to give you our feedback based upon some neighbors and our opinion on this project. First of all, the Pulte development would create an unacceptable safety hazard on a narrow scenic road in a school zone not suitable for an increase in traffic. Hannigan Engineering confirms that the road is nineteen feet wide. In fact, in front of the school, the road is seventeen and a half feet wide. Roads of this type should be twenty-four feet wide with a four-to-eight-foot shoulder on each side. That's twenty-eight to thirty-two feet, and we have seventeen and a half feet in front of our school. Second, the only party to significantly benefit from this project is the developer, who will reap an estimated one-hundred-million dollars in revenue, while the city is likely to net less than one-million dollars after incremental infrastructure and services are extracted. That represents a half a percent of the city's budget of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars. Clearly, this revenue is not going to get the city to the promised land. The developer's rationale for rezoning the property to a fifty-five-and-over community to allow residents to downsize in Marlborough is fiction. This is because the average selling price of the majority of these Pulte homes, as you heard, ranges from four to eight-hundred thousand. These prices are juxtaposed against the average three-year selling price of Marlborough homes of four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. I've downsized twice, and people that downsize don't buy something more expensive. Four, the development will have a devastating impact on the environment. The deforestation of ten to fifteen acres of pristine woodlands and the wetlands would have detrimental effects on the town's local environment. Additionally, the development will require EPA approval, which may not be granted. Beyond these substantial issues, the development, to me, symbolizes the takeover and destruction of a deeply-rooted, small-city community by a huge development corporation. When questioned at an October 12 meeting at Hillside about the deforestation of up to fifteen acres of our local landscape, Pulte representatives simply stated it was a necessary evil, like they were in charge of running the town. It blew me away.
Eddie, you're almost done because you've got three minutes to rub.
All right. Can I have one more minute?
Well, how about this? This is a question session. You're really speaking in opposition. You'd be better served to stop now and continue with the next part. How's that?
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. Anyone else with questions?
I have one more question.
The traffic study, did you guys, with the width of the road, how do you anticipate getting all of the trucks to bring the infrastructure? Concrete trucks, dumpsters, moving gravel, steel? How do you propose to get up Robin Hill Street without having some type of traffic mitigation?
We're in the due diligence phase on this project, sir. I'm very aware of the roadway width characteristics that you mentioned. I've had family members go to your school, actually. I've driven family members to your school fairly regularly. We are going to very carefully consider those characteristics in the planning of this project. We're well aware that Hillside, I'm sorry, Robin Hill Street is a scenic roadway and that it's sensitive to widening, and widening isn't necessarily the solution in every case as it relates... As it relates to construction-related activity, this project, if it advances, will be subject to a very detailed construction management plan, as would any project along that street, even single-family homes, or schools for that matter. So we're very sensitive and have a lot of experience working in communities like this, on roadways like this, scenic roadways that have limited width, and that will be accommodated and considered very carefully throughout the planning process.
How much weight do you think that road could handle?
We're not far enough into the evaluation to make those determinations.
But you're a road specialist, right? So a typical scenic road at 17, 18 feet, how much? Non-curved, no buttress on each side of that road, what do you think the weight it could handle be?
We haven't done pavement cores. We don't know what the substructure of the roadway consists of, and that will be part of the evaluation as we move forward, working closely with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to remind members of the public, the questions that are to be posed, if they're answerable, they will answer them. If not, they'll be taken up in committee. So don't, I mean, again, as the applicant has said, it's early stages, so there's a lot of work to still go ahead here. Any other questions from the members of the public? Any other questions? Steve?
Good evening. My name is Steve. I live here in Marlborough on Victoria Lane, and my question is, you recently opened a similar-type project at Chauncey Lake that you showed, and I'm wondering, is that project sold out?
That's a great question. So Chauncey Lake is a total of 700 homes. We opened it approximately three years ago, and 300 homes are sold and occupied at this time, and so there's still a few hundred homes to go there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any further questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Can I ask?
Sir, to the microphone, please.
Can I ask how long you estimate it will take to complete this project?
Yeah, hi, Ed. So I would estimate about three to four years to complete the project from start to finish. So these garden-style buildings that we're proposing take about 10 to 11 months to build, and while we're building the first one, we would be pre-selling it in the hopes that we would be building pretty much one building a year for, there's three proposed buildings, so there would be a three-year build out of those. And simultaneously, we would be building out the townhomes at the same time, and so all three, you know, all the different uses would come together three to four years from start to finish to clean up and be done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition?
Good evening. My name's Paul Pelletier, and I live on Jacobs Road. I just wanted to address the issue that's admittedly not completely determined yet, the traffic situation. I just find it a little bit difficult to believe that interjecting 400-plus cars onto a road, it's already underserved in terms of its maintenance, its width, and the traffic on there, how that can be, how anyone can believe that that will not have a market impact on the traffic situation there. It just does not seem reasonable to me. And absent a detailed transportation plan that says this is how we can arrive at this situation or this conclusion, I would think it's premature to be changing the zoning. This is not, my concern is not about Pulte. My concern is about anybody introducing 400 cars into that neighborhood, okay? So if this were going to proceed, I would think that would be addressed first as to how would that road be accommodated to take the influx of that many cars? That's all it.
Thank you, Paul. Any members of the public speaking in opposition?
Arlene Stetson. I live at 603 Robin Hill Street, and just like everybody has mentioned here, we were at the meeting that they had earlier, and traffic is a huge concern already. They say it's a low-volume road. Well, you get soccer moms, or you get the people going to the sports center, and we've got buses going down that road, we've got people from out of state going down that road, flying down that road. They go up on the lawns. Sometimes you take your life in your hands getting your mail out of your mailbox. None of those houses have lawns that are deep, and so if somebody says, well, let's widen the road, first of all, again, it's a scenic road. Secondly, I don't want to lose my whole front yard, and neither do the people that I've talked to on Robin Hill Street. You know, it's not just the traffic. They talk about it fitting in well to the neighborhood. I don't see how two four-story buildings that they're planning, plus all the others, and the number of cars fits in to that neighborhood. I just don't see how it's possible. Also, they were talking about, or we've talked about, the deforestation, and yes, I can imagine they think it is a necessary evil, but the people that live on that road probably don't think that. And also, you can't tell me that there's not going to be an overflow into Jacobs, Donahue, Reynolds, all of those streets, because trust me, as soon as people find that they can cut through, they're going to cut through. So it's not just Robin Hill Street residents. I live directly in front of where they're going to build. I don't want to live in a construction zone for three to four years. I don't want to have to always keep my windows closed, not be able to go outside, breathe the dust and everything that's going to be attributed to that. It's like, if any one of you wanted to just live in a construction, and again, my house is close to the street, so it's not anything that I really want to happen. And that's, those are, that'll probably take up my three minutes, but I have more.
I've got 30 seconds if you want to keep going, Arlene.
I can't get it out in 30 seconds.
You can save those.
I'll save them. Thank you.
Thanks, Arlene. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition?
Just a comment really. My name is Pete McKenna. I'm the facilities director at Hillside School. We see, you know, us being so front-side to that street, we see so much activity with the vehicles. Just before coming down here, it was almost serendipitous, right? A big, big one-ton dump truck coming up the road, an SUV, a woman had to pull over off to the side and up on the embankment to let that car go by. And we know this, we've said it, we're beating a dead horse here, but it's worse in the winter months when the snow is piled up on the embankments. There's nowhere to go. I don't see any way to make this work without widening the road, and you can't really widen it too much. I mean, we have, our chapel is on the street, we have these old scenic stone walls and, you know, old-growth trees to deal with. Seems like a very difficult proposition. Proposition, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Ed?
Can I finish up here?
Absolutely.
So, just three points in summary. The school and its neighbors are opposed to the Pulte development because it lacks any significant financial benefit to the city, and it's not a realistic downsizing opportunities for Marlborough residents. I'm 20 years past retirement. I've downsized twice. You want to spend less money, not more money, when you downsize. In addition, it creates this safety hazard in the school zone. I'm sorry, guys, it can't be fixed. I live there. And to deforest up to 15 acres, I don't know where, who does that? Like, what town does that, that's concerned about the environment? Like, that doesn't happen anymore. It shouldn't happen anymore. In short, my point is this: the only person that's going to benefit from this is a huge corporation that's going to bring up revenue of $100 million while we're left with chump chains and a wrecked environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition?
Hello, everybody. My name is Jenny G. I work here at Hillside School. I'm not planning to speak tonight until I'm inspired by folks who stand up to speak here. And as a first-generation immigrant, I think I can offer some outsider view I'd like to share with you. I grew up in a city with over 10 million residents together, large city back in Shanghai. I used to respect and admire those high skyscrapers and all the concrete. I never seen a jumping happy chipmunk in my whole life until I immigrated here. You might laugh, that's true. I never seen a walk across my whole life until I settled down here. Guys, this is why I love Marlborough so very much. You don't know what you have until you lose it. You probably never realize what you lost or respected. The way I grew up, I have to drive 100 miles, go to zoo to see little animals. Now I see turkeys, deers, even coyotes in my backyard. My school students, they are very happy. Wow, this beautiful America, you get all that. Families, they're from Japan or overseas, UK and British, Mexican, they love it here. That's what you have here. People might say, really, doesn't matter, I'm only cutting down five-acre trees. Yes, one project, five-acre trees. 10 projects, how many acre trees? You tell me. With all that construction going on, you have 100 projects, you're cutting down how many acre of trees? This is where you don't think, because inch by inch, acre by acre, those trees are dead, they're killed. I never seen anything like the trees over 20 years old when I back in China, my hometown, until I got here. So that's where it inspired me to stand up and to share my outsider's will with you. I think it's in every single of you's hands to protect the natural beauty of this community, to protect every resident, what they, preserve it and love it and embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Hey, this is not a sporting event. No applause. Everybody understand? Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name is Rick Stetson. I live at 603 Robin Hill, and to follow up on what she said, the woods across the street from my house are the habitat for turkeys, deer, coyotes, raccoons, lots and lots of wildlife. Where do they go? Do they go across 290? I couldn't say. The other item I wanted to say was, this, this, Robin Hill is a designated scenic road, and by definition, you cannot widen a scenic, so, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Rick. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Council Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about the layout. Can I hear more about the, why there's that, the easternmost spur? I find, I mean, I know this is early stages, but I'd like to hear more about the decision about why that piece of it was so isolated off to the east and not more centralized? Is that west? West is, oh, okay. Okay, sorry, yeah, so then the western edge. Thank you.
Sure, I mean, it's, at this point, again, we're early along in the design stages, but it's simply a makeup of the parcel that's a, it's just a wonky-shaped parcel, so that it really kind of drove the decision for setting that, the buildings up that way, and we felt...
Just to follow up, while you're answering that, is wetlands a factor? Is that in the middle, or is it just because of the shape and the layout?
Sure, there are certainly wetlands on the site, and as I mentioned, we have VHB on our team that have started that delineation process, and this design takes into account of minimizing and avoiding wetland impacts.
One final question, sorry. Do you, with this layout, I don't even see how it's necessarily possible, but, and site plan and our emergency professionals certainly would, I would defer to their opinion when the time comes, but it just feels like with one access road, that spur feels really isolated. Is there, have you looked at it, would there be an access road in case of emergency? It looks like that's going to not be even possible, is that...
Yeah, that's certainly something that we look forward to, having those conversations with emergency services during that site plan review, but that's absolutely a valid point, understood.
Thank you, Council Wagner.
Mr. President, I just wanted, just one thing I wanted to add. In terms of access and egress, the majority of these buildings by code have to be sprinkled. So unlike a traditional single-family cul-de-sac subdivision you may see where there'd be concerns about one way in, one way out, none of those homes are typically sprinkled. The garden buildings have to be sprinkled. Any of the clusters of the townhouses that are in threes have to be sprinkled, and quite honestly, if we're designing this the way it is, likely the entire project would be sprinkled. So that's often a concern that fire has, and often one that is alleviated when they learn that the buildings are going to be sprinkled.
I'll say, Council Wagner? Council Ducey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have to admit, the Attorney Fark may have just answered it for me. I'm, just a concern I have that the entire facility only has one entrance, and if it gets blocked, there's no other way, for whatever reason, fire or otherwise, you know. You know, you're talking about 200-plus units. How many total bedrooms? Would be closer to 300?
So all the townhomes would be two-bedroom, and the garden buildings would be roughly an even split between ones and twos.
Okay, okay, so closer to 400 bedrooms then?
Roughly, a little bit less.
So it's a large campus-like area, you know, large development area. So just having a single entrance, I have concerns with. I don't know how to solve that problem, considering how the property is laid out, but leave that for future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ducey. Council Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation, for the comments from the public. My first question, I know on the slide it said location, you mentioned that more than one-third of the site remains undisturbed. Can you explain the 25% lot coverage, and specifically if that's including, like, removing the wetlands, or what is going into that calculation for the lot coverage, since it seems like the majority of the site is covered?
So the lot coverage is essentially the impervious areas, the roadways and the buildings. Any of the grass areas or recreational areas that are pervious wouldn't count towards lot coverage. So by zoning, the maximum lot coverage is 40%, and our concept plan is at 25%. The one-third undisturbed is, you know, roughly the portions of the site that you see that have, you know, the existing GIS trees and wetlands being shown, they wouldn't be touched as part of the project.
And a follow-up, is that the requirement that that land cannot be touched, or that's the developer saying we don't want to disturb that land?
Well, certainly, wetland areas, you know, we have buffer zones we have to contend with, but we're leaving a number of areas that are not wet as buffers to, you know, benefit our neighbors and so that we can, you know, screen the project to the maximum extent possible.
And then I know in the beginning of the presentation, it was mentioned how this was an ideal location for residential use. I'm curious, the distance, I don't think it was indicated on this slide, but 2290, given that if anyone was to access the highway, they would have to go through all of the backroads to go all the way around. So I'm just wondering, to me, that seems like why this wasn't used for limited industrial in the... in the past, because there wasn't a direct line to the highway. And if you could maybe explain the distance and what the buffering would be like to that highway?
Yeah, I'll defer to Bob on the distances, but roughly, if you take a right out of what the project would be, you can get to 290, you know, via Northborough, going past Hillside School. Take a left, you get up to Bigelow and go across over to Donald Lynch Boulevard. So it's, you know, it's not right on the highway for sure, but, you know, it's got reasonably good highway access as one of the draws to the site as residential community.
Yeah, just one touch, add to that, too, is just the, the makeup of it being a fifty-five-plus age-restricted. The desire lines towards the highway would be less than maybe more traditional, as the commute patterns are much different and the use patterns would be different. So it wouldn't, the expectation wouldn't necessarily be that each vehicle trip is destined for the highway, but those origin/destination type analysis, that will be part of that traffic impact study.
And thank you for that. And I just have, I guess, two questions related to the design of the site itself. Why was there such a large cluster at the entryway? That would seem very undesirable to me, to have housing right where people enter. There's gonna be so many vehicles trying to get around. And then specifically, why the mixture of the garden, I guess, is that the language, the garden homes versus the townhouses? Why the mixture in the way that it's currently described?
Sure, so the mixture helps give buyers a range of options. A one-bedroom in, in, you know, a garden building, or two-bedroom in a garden building, or traditional townhouse, either in cluster of two or cluster of three. It's for variety. And as we mentioned before, some of the range of price points, that's one of the benefits. I mean, typically, these types of projects, you know, are taking people that are looking to downsize, but having a range of options is, is helpful. And one note, it didn't come up earlier, but this would be subject to the affordable housing restrictions in the city's zoning ordinance. Whichever version end up being applicable to this project, we will be subject to it.
Okay, and then can you answer the part about the cluster in the front?
Sure.
So, yeah, actually, that was something that we had kind of worked through our site design process based on conversations, as we felt that the, the townhome, the look and the feel fit better as being towards the front. Those are roughly fifty feet back or so, you know, matching that, but we felt that the, the townhome structure fit the, the roadway, and it made a better sense to put those towards the front. And just as we get into site design, the topography of itself, it's, it's rolling hills back there. And so where those garden buildings are located, it's kind of down under, or not under, but behind a knoll. So we actually felt that that worked better, working with the topography as far as those buildings towards the back.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. And, you know, kind of mirroring the comments before, I am concerned about the roadway. I mean, I've walked that, it's very dangerous, people do speed on it. This is one of the last existing more rural areas in the city, particularly in given that you don't feel like you're, you know, in the rest of Marlboro, it certainly is very isolated, which I know probably is a benefit. I don't know if you all have looked at Crane Meadow specifically, but this seems like a project that really mirrors it, given its location on Williams Street and then having a setback of an over fifty-five. And so I would encourage you to look at those other communities, because the traffic and speeding on Williams is a concern for those residents. So I would imagine something happening. People would move in here, and they wouldn't even really be able to exit because of the amount of traffic. And over fifty-five, they would be, you know, more elderly, and folks like to walk around the complex, so I would be concerned about that traffic impact. You know, it is obviously for the existing neighborhood an issue, but also if you were to put, and I don't know if you said how many people this would be, but all of those people there would be a challenge. Okay. And can you just mention the number of folks? I know you said the number of units, but how many individuals would that encompass?
It's, it's hard to say, but, you know, it is a mix. So the, the townhomes themselves, there's, how many townhomes?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, sorry. Two-bedroom townhomes, and then each of the garden buildings are a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom. You know, so as far as the actual numbers of the inhabitants being a fifty-five-plus, it ranges somewhere between one and two per unit for each of those.
Okay.
Based on what we've got in previous communities. And it's certainly that, that data and that analysis would be part of a fiscal impact analysis study that would, we would produce as part of the next stage.
Okay, in the interest of time, I'll reserve more questions for Urban Affairs, but I would encourage you all to bring that kind of data about the number of folks you are anticipating in this development, because that goes into not only our traffic understanding, but the density of this particular development. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Perelman. Council Orem, I'll work my way right around the table.
Mr. President, if you want, I will yield to the WOD council if she wishes to speak first. It's her choice. No, okay, I just didn't wanna, and many of my questions were answered from the other councilors, thank you, as well as from the audience. Thank you for your questions. One question is based on where it's located. It's right on top of the highway. Has there been any consideration in this plan or in future plans? I'd like to see what the plan is for noise reduction. I don't know if you have anything planned for noise reduction?
Sorry, that's certainly something that we will, we'll factor into our next phases of it. We are actually, we've, we've constructed a couple existing projects that are on like ninety-three, for instance, in North Reading. And so there are certain architectural, you know, designs that can be done, whether it's soundproof glass or other elements that can be done to help with that. And that project in particular, in North Reading, right on ninety-three, it's been in, we've had people living there for over five-plus years now and have not heard any complaints from that.
Thank you for that. The ducker line going to the right of that plan, is that the high-tension wires?
Yes, that's correct. Those are the, that's the power lines right there.
So you'll be right on top of them on that last building?
That last building would be adjacent, yes, correct.
Okay, well, we can talk about that later, too. I applaud you for being electrified. Has there been any consideration on generating electricity on-site, such as solar panels, or heating with geothermal?
So I can't say that we've really looked into geothermal too deeply as of yet. It's certainly a new technology that is kind of making its way through. From a solar perspective, it is absolutely something that we have been looking at in a number of our different projects. One thing I can say that we've running, we're running into from an architectural challenge is that, so we're electrifying these buildings, which means that all of that, the mechanics need to be brought to the roof. So we have, these are, these will be flat-roof buildings, which we're, we're bringing in those electric heat pumps to provide that to the roof. So it really reduces the available real estate in the most ideal location to put those. However, I will say, the townhomes themselves, they will be all home, homeownership, excuse me, and they will be designed and wired to, to be able to accommodate solar power for each of those individual units.
Thank you. And just one other question, and comment with the question. I thank you for saying you're trying to keep people within our community. We see it too often that even our own kids can't live here due to affordability. And that's what I was gonna just note, that for me, affordability is a major concern, and I will not, as a city council, if I'm still here, support any reduction in what we require for affordable housing at this point. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Council Orem. Council Brown?
Thank you, President Austin. And if you can hear me well through the mask, I'll keep it on if that's okay. I work in early ed and I catch all the germs. So I was just wondering, and I'm not sure if this panel is the appropriate panel to answer this question, but this being an issue and a request of a zoning overlay, I think a big thing for me is the current zoning and what may by right go onto this parcel of land, especially hearing the concerns of the residents who live close to this proposed development. So with the limited industrial, one of the things that I know could go in, and it's my own industry, is childcare. So by right, something like childcare or a financial institution and insurance institution could go onto this land, which would also see, you know, trees getting cut down. A childcare center would be a dramatic increase in traffic at different times of day. Are you aware of any other potential buyers for this land that would, would maybe be building within their right? Or is that anything in your group that, that could potentially happen?
Yeah, I mean, we're representing Pulte, which is a potential buyer of the site, only for this particular use, because that's all Pulte does. I, I can't speak to the current property owners in terms of what other options they may have, but the, the property is certainly for sale. In terms of by-right uses, there are several in the limited industrial district. You noted several of them. I mean, honestly, I would, I would point to the Airport Industrial Park as your classic limited industrial. Many of the uses in the park are as-of right. Some of them are special permits, you heard from me earlier tonight, but a number of those uses are as-of right. That is a, you know, that was built out as-of right. Certain individual uses need a special permit, but the development of the park was as-of right, just subject to site plan approval.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Falk. Thank you, President Austin.
Thank you, Council Brown. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Council Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, most of my comments, fortunately, I'm on urban. I do have one question, though. Did you talk about a thousand feet between the last unit and 290 East? I can't figure the scale there.
No, sorry, that was coming from my discussion. What I was referencing was roughly a thousand feet from that section of the development to Robin Hill Street. So because Robin Hill Street kind of curves to the southwest down here, these, these units up here are roughly a thousand feet of buffered through that forested area from, that's where that thousand-foot reference came from.
Okay, I tied to everything by a football field, and I couldn't quite figure it out.
So roughly three.
President, any other comments or questions from the councilors? Councilor Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it, my question is, you have about ten projects that you put forward in your packet. What do you do after you're done building them? Do you turn it over to a management company, or are you a management company? What does the HOA do in that regards?
That's a great question. So these, so this proposal is for a for-sale homeownership condominium, which will be created under chapter one eighty-three A. So during the build-out of the construction of the development, Pulte Homes is, is the declaren trustee of the condominium and runs and operates the condominium in accordance with the documents that are established. At, at the conclusion of the property, there's a turnover event. And so then, what that is, is that the homeowners have an election, and they elect a resident board of trustees, and then, and that replaces the declaren on the board, and Pulte Homes, moves on to other projects, and residents take over the ownership and maintenance of the private condominium in accordance with all of the guidelines and rules and regulations that were established.
Thank you. My next question is that, it looks like you have to purchase two different parcels of land to make this one complete project. If you could go back to the plan that shows the outline of the boundaries, next one, one more, I think. Yes, so it looks like where the first cluster is, there's a house that abuts that, and that's not shown. So I just want a point of information for the council. Also, it looks like moving, if you side your finger further back, according to GIS, that is all wetlands, so that looks like that cannot be buildable. And then where the arrow kind of sticks out, that point, looks like there's wetlands there as well, up further up where you can't build. Correct, so that's wetlands. And then from the west part of that segment, it looks like to GIS that there's wetlands that kind of cuts across that roadway. So I know that you say that a lot of it's buildable, that you're trying to do twenty-five percent, but it looks like a lot of it can't be built. So I just want some of that misinformation, because it looks like, I'm interested to see what conservation says in regarding that layout. It is a very obscure plot plan, so I, I understand where you're coming from that, but I'm just curious on how to get that west side version, if that wetland that does cut through. So just point of information for all of you, so if you look at GIS, there's a lot more wetlands that may not be developable, so I think that's probably why we have this layout. Would that be accurate to say?
That definitely is part of that, absolutely. And so, again, we keep referencing the due diligence days and being early on, and part of that GIS wetland, it's just, you know, there's, there's a margin of error with that, so, which is why we have VHB on, on our staff to, or on our team, to help identify that in the field. And so part of that next step would be to go out and, well, first, we'd be working with Priscilla and the Conservation Commission on an ANRAD to make sure that everybody's in agreement on the actual delineation of that wetland. And then we would locate it from a survey perspective, and that would be part of the site characteristics that would really help drive that final design. But you're absolutely correct in that, that is part of that reasoning. And so, once we get that final delineation, that would help us with that next step.
So based upon that conclusion, this whole could change. I know that we're just in front of the overlay district, and I respect that, but I just want us as councilors and people home that this may not be the final project, just based upon that.
I can guarantee you that this right here is not the final project.
Thank you.
It will, it will vary to some degree, yes, and that, that process that we were going, that if we're able to get to, will certainly help drive those changes and modifications.
And if you can build on those wetland areas, do you increase the project, increasing with the units, or no?
So, to be clear, we, we do not plan on building on any of those wetland areas. This respects those boundaries. You're absolutely correct in that there, there could be an area of crossing there, which would be part of what we'll be working with, and that would be managed through, I don't even wanna suggest yet how we'd manage that from an engineering perspective, because Matt's, that's Matt's job. So, but it, it certainly, we're not looking at building on or through the wetlands, though, for sure.
But if you can, so like that parcel where that one house is, you could, if that's a, go ahead and clear, because it, based upon GIS, that's a wetland area, and if you can build on that area, that, that would be my concern, because there's a house right there.
Absolutely, no, and that's, we've actually, we've met with the, that property owner, Mr. Gardner, and we're certainly respectful of his, we're staying very clear of, of his property, and that is not part of this site layout.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Dumas. Any other questions from the councilors? Council Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Attorney Falk, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but from the GIS map, I looked at the property card, and one piece of property is the twenty-five-point-nine acres that is specified as industrial land unbuildable. Well, that is the parcel behind the two-point-two-four acres. My guess is it's unbuildable because they're two separate parcels, and you can't get to that back parcel, but I would like to know if that's the reason why. Secondly, we are not here tonight for a special permit for the buildings. We are here to change the zoning. I will remind those of us who were on this council in two thousand eighteen and nineteen that it took us three tries to amend six fifty-twenty-two to add retirement community, multifamily to the zoning. It also very clearly stated in the definition that it is one single multiple-unit structure, because we designed it for Crowley Drive, and that's what sits at the end of Crowley Drive now. One single structure. They are asking us to change the zoning to be or, I mean, and, or, sorry, or, a retirement community detached townhome or a retirement community multifamily. They are also asking, and my computer died, so I'm borrowing, I believe, the part that would take care of that definition of one single, that is, that language of, except as otherwise set forth herein. So I think we need to understand exactly what we will be discussing in Urban Affairs. It's not what they're gonna build if we change the zoning. So I guess the question I would ask the developer is, why can't you do a retirement development, a retirement community detached townhome by itself?
And we, we certainly could. We have found that having a mix of unit types and, and styles has been helpful to folks who are looking to, to buy into these communities, having the option of either townhouse or multifamily garden, garden unit. And I just wondered, on the, with respect to the unbuildable lot, I believe that's a, a holdover from when the parcels weren't under common ownership, they're now under common ownership, so we have, our current, our seller has the lot that has frontage on Robin Hill Street, and then the larger parcel is adjacent to that. So it's, I think, a holdover from an A&R plan that previously showed that that parcel was unbuildable.
Okay, and then just for everyone's inform, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to comment?
I was gonna add a little commentary.
Up to the microphone, please.
I just wanted to add one more response to that question that you asked. And I guess what I wanted to add is that, so Pulte Homes has this property under agreement. And the, the seller, the owner of the site, has made a decision that he would like to sell it, and he liked it to be developed. And, and you asked a question, well, why can't it be all townhomes? I don't know if the seller would sell the land to us if it were all townhomes. The value of the land is not anywhere near what he's going to get for it. So... So if, if it's not this project or somewhat similar to this project of what we're proposing, the seller may take other options and, and it wouldn't be Pulte Homes developing, it would be some other type of use or some other type of developer that, you know, that we don't do. So, you know, that, I think that answers the question in addition to what Brian said.
Okay. I know that it was asked by another counselor about the fact that it is LI. Sunovian is down at the other end of Robin Hill, but they have been a well-liked property and a company that does business in the city of Marlboro. And I don't think anybody's ever objected to them being there. But I, I will just end with, according to 65026 Affordable Housing, provisions of this section shall not apply to existing retirement community or an expansion of a retirement community. And I believe when we discussed the potential changes to the code, I had included retirement communities, but found out in section 40A of Mass General Law, you cannot mandate anybody that is only 55 and over to have affordable housing. So they will not have any affordables.
If I may. Pulte Homes is, Pulte Homes of New England is the larger, largest builder of age-restricted housing in the state. Of, of that list of the 10 properties that we showed on the screen, I'd say probably more than five, five, six, seven of them are age-restricted under the HOPA Act, Housing for Older Persons Act. And many of them have an affordable component, local, local initiative plan through DHCD. The restriction I think you might be referring to is that back in 2016, 2017, the DHCD, which is now EOHLC, started enforcing a policy where they said that in an affordable home that's approved by DHCD to be on the subsidized housing inventory, you cannot restrict children from those units. So you absolutely can have age-restricted housing, but you cannot, but a local zoning cannot restrict children from those units. So we are proposing a homeownership for-sale housing condominium here. It is age-restricted and we are more than willing to comply with the city of Marlboro's inclusionary housing requirements. I believe there's a 12% on the table and that would be no problem for us and we do affordable housing all the time. We're probably the largest builder of affordable housing in the state.
I'll say Counsel Robie. Any other questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors?
Sorry. I just have, this does not, this is also in a, for a public hearing at the planning board. It is not until November 14th.
13.
So this will wait until that happens. They're running a little behind on all of theirs, so bear with us as we move through the process.
I got to ask all three questions again. Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Hearing none. I closed that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Okay. Agenda item number seven.
No minutes.
Now's the time for the continued public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to chapter 650 zoning of the code to add a new section to create the Red Spring Road Overlay District, order number 23-108951A. Again, this public he, Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to recuse myself from any of this voting. I am a direct, a direct abutter to this property at 108 Upland Road. I do entertain my rights to speak at the hearing, but I will remove myself from the room until that portion is there. So with that said, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. We will let the record reflect that you will not be participating in this matter that is before the council.
Lucky guy.
Okay, so this is a public hearing again. Will be taken up in the same four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city counselor. And I'll remind everyone that we have a three-minute speaking limit. We'll start with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, name and address for the record, please.
You're President Austin, Counselors Brian Falk, Attorney at Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester. I represent the Red Spring Road Homeowners Association. Number of our board of trustees members are here tonight and a number of our residents of Red Spring Road are here tonight. The association petitioned the council for a new overlay district on behalf of the condominium unit owners on Red Spring Road. The overlay district would cover the entire 50-acre parcel along the southern shore of Fort Meadow reservoir. Just dancing. There we go. So this is the 50-acre parcel that would consist of the entirety of the overlay district. This is a unique neighborhood, to say the least. 28 single-family homes, a club, and various accessory structures, all built on a single lot. And the lot and all these structures are pre-existing non-conforming under the Marlboro zoning ordinance. This presents challenges for these homeowners in making the types of ordinary repairs and changes to their structures that other single-family home members, owners enjoy in the city. So the purpose of the overlay district is to preserve this neighborhood and allow homeowners to make simple improvements to their homes as of right without the need for a special permit. Property was developed through ground leases over several decades when the entire property was owned by the Morse family. So this is a view, the southern shore of Fort Meadow, that's our property that we're talking about. This is a view looking southwest. Much of the property is heavily forested. And this is a view of the shoreline, these are the types of homes that are along the shoreline of this property. This is an aerial view of the entire lake. Our lot, you can see, is the less densely developed portion along the southern shore. Last year, when the Morse family had put the property up for sale, the tenants at the time got together, purchased the property and created a condominium association. This was really the only way for these 29 owners to buy the land and, and own the land under, underneath their lakeside homes that many have shared with their families over several decades. Neighbors were happy to buy the property rather than seeing the land sold to a developer. The condominium approach also helps preserve the property. It now has 29 owners governed by condominium association. This makes changes to the status quo very difficult. But the property's history left the owners in a bind regarding the Marlboro zoning ordinance. Because the homes are all pre-existing non-conforming, the types of simple improvements and accessory structures that are allowed under the zoning ordinance by right in other neighborhoods require a special permit in this neighborhood. The building commissioner looked to the homeowners association to address these zoning issues. And what we came up with is the overlay district. Other options we've heard floated, a subdivision, a traditional subdivision would be very difficult here. For one, most of these homes wouldn't fit on a traditional A2 lot. They weren't built that way, they weren't designed that way, and they wouldn't fit on that type of traditional lot. And for a subdivision, Red Spring Road would have to be upgraded significantly to meet city standards, which would add significant impervious areas. So to do a traditional subdivision, you would first be looking at a very long list of variances from the ZBA, which are in Marlboro, are very difficult to get. And probably an even longer list of subdivision waivers from the planning board just to turn this into a traditional subdivision. We didn't think that made sense and it was going to be quite expensive and probably not viable legally. So the other option would be special permits for each and every small change to, to any of these homes. That would be time-consuming and also quite expensive. So the overlay district, we feel, addresses these, these concerns and makes these homes conforming. There we go. So this is a map of the property lines in the area. So just toggle back once. Property lines in the area. Because our lot is so big, 50 acres, the abutters list for this property has 119 separate property owners, plus the 29 on Red Spring Road. So all 148 of those owners would get certified mailing of a public hearing for something as simple as an addition or a deck that no one could see other than the homes directly next to those other homes. Certified mailing for that type of a hearing would be over $1,100, certified mailing to all of those property owners. And that's on top of application fees, plans, sometimes attorney's fees. Doesn't seem like a good use of time or money for, for these types of improvements. And the overlay district would, would address that. This is the surrounding zoning map, zoning districts. We are in the A2 district. A3 across the lake and to the east allows for greater density and those, as you can see on the property lines, those areas have been developed with significant density. This is a view along Lake Shore Drive on the other side of the lake, much denser development in A3. That's not what we're looking to do at all. We're planning to leave this lower-density neighborhood alone. Our owners have exclusive use areas that cover nearly the entire shoreline of the 50-acre parcel. There are three small areas of common land along the shore, which are not developable, either because they're too small or there are wetlands that are present. So adding any homes along this shoreline, because this is a condominium, would require all 29 condo owners to agree. That's highly unlikely to happen, in my opinion, given that, that would reduce the lawn areas of the exclusive use areas of these homes and their valuable shoreline. So the overlay district essentially takes what works in the A2 district and modifies what does not work. We'll still have significant restrictions in the overlay district. Lot coverage is capped at 30%. We're currently at just 5% with no plans to change that. Any new lot would require an area of 18,000 square feet. That's larger than nearly all the nearby lots in this area in the A3 district and across the lake. A2 use restrictions would remain in place. A2, very few commercial uses are permitted. Multifamily apartment buildings are prohibited. Two-family buildings are prohibited. Any change in those restrictions would require a zoning amendment and a hearing just like this before the city council. We have no plans to do that. So essentially, the use restrictions in our overlay district mirror those of the underlying A2. The changes we make are two-dimensional controls that render the homes and the lot conforming to zoning. Single-family homes in the overlay district would have a 3,000-square-foot floor area cap, so we wouldn't have massive homes along the lake even if someone was to do a reconstruction. And again, any change, because this is a condominium, homeowners association, any change, however simple, requires the approval of the condominium association. So anyone has to go to their 28 other, other neighbors and their governing board to apply and ask for the change before it even gets to the building department. Just want to turn briefly to our president of our condo association, Bob Duran, just to tell you a little bit about the association's approach to the overlay district. Bob?
Thanks, Brian. Like many of you, I've served the city of Marlboro for many years, both as rep, senator, secretary of environmental affairs. And I've got a reputation as being an environmental advocate here in Massachusetts. I think most of you know that. I got that because I grew up in the summers on Fort Meadow, enjoying the lake, enjoying the wilderness that existed there then and exists there now today. So I take offense when people start challenging our intent. The people who live here are from generational families for the most part. I take offense when people start rumors that are just not true. And as Mark Twain once said, "It ain't what you don't know that gets you in trouble, it's what you know for sure that just ain't so." And so we have some folks who are just misinforming their neighbors, misinforming the public on the lake, and I wanted to address that upfront. We are 29 separate home and cottage owners who have owned our homes on Red Spring Road for many years, in some cases, generations, as I said. While we own the homes and cottages, we leased the land from the Morse family who have owned the 50 acres for almost 100 years. In June 2021, the Morse family, Pam's here tonight, put the land up for sale. There were many interested parties and the land could have been sold to developers in a subdivision or condos, could have been built on that property. We, the neighbors, immediately banded together and luckily, the Morse family accepted our offer to buy the 50 acres. We represent our homes, about 5% of that landmass of the 50 acres. That's 95% undeveloped, unlike the other side of the lake. In fact, on the other side of the lake, they'll take a beach and put a house on it. And they did that. That, that tree canopy represents about 22% of the lake's watershed. And that keeps Fort Meadow cool and provides a sponge for stormwater runoff from the high school, the elementary school, and some of the subdivisions behind us. I wanted to address the condo association for a second. The only way for us to accommodate 29 different homes, as Attorney Falk said, on all different-sized lots and setbacks from neighbors in the road was to form a condo association. It gives us exclusive use of our yards without trying to make all the lots conform. An impossible task since our homes already existed on the 50 acres, which we now all own and have a 1/29th share of. There has been misrepresentation that we needed city permits to form a condo. That is simply not true. Condominiums are a form of ownership and not a zoning issue, governed by state statute. We filed the necessary paperwork with the Secretary of State and deed, with the registry of deeds, and so now it is set in stone. It's the Red Spring Shores Condo Association. No permits needed from the city. There are many downsides, by the way, to becoming a condo. Many of us, you know, probably would wish we went the subdivision route, but we couldn't do that. They are typically worth less than single-family homes on own lots. Owners don't have as much control of what happens in the yard or the common areas. That is determined by the rules and regulations of the condo association and governed by the board of directors. And we have had some building going on down there. We've had additions. The man in the corner office is building a house right now, very modest home, less than 2,200 square feet. Owners are financially responsible for all maintenance, road repairs, culvert repairs, plowing, sanding, tree removal, and the like, and have to pay an annual maintenance fee on top of taxes. I don't think my neighbors on the other side of the lake would want to pay $6,000 a year in condo fees on top of their taxes. You can be sure, we wish we all owned our own lots. But this condo association fits the people who are there because we believe in the rural nature of Red Spring Road. Taxation and assessments of Red Spring properties also has come up. It appears that some of our neighbors like looking at others' neighbors' assessments. It's become a hobby for someone on the lake. Facts are these. The last time this side of the lake, our side of the lake, was assessed, we were all on leased property, with many of us having crawl spaces, dirt sellers, or partial basements. Remember, these cottages and homes were built in the '30s and '40s. Some still don't have insulation in our seasonal. Fact six. Highly a fair comparison with your homes with all the amenities on the other side of the lake. This past summer, we had the city assessor come down to reassess our properties. Since we have become a condo association, he has assured us that our property valuation will be going up substantially, which we expected. Neither the condo issue or the taxation or assessment issue is before the city council, despite what someone has told you. In fact, the only issue is the overlay district. And it was the city of Marlboro's building inspector, city solicitor, working with our attorney, who recommended that we fix the underlying issue of being a pre-existing non-conforming use. Pre-existing because we existed before the city of Marlboro's zoning even existed. Non-conforming because we don't meet the current A2 zone requirements that are in the underlying district. The building inspector, city solicitor, and our attorney from Myrick O'Connell came up with the overlay district as a way to allow us to conform and going forward, the zoning requirements could be met. All future building of sheds, patios, decks, additions, garages would go to the building department for permits. And frankly, according to our attorney, the overlay will provide more control than currently exists now. Like, don't forget, we've been, we've been doing additions, we've been doing decks, we've been doing tier downs and building new structures. So if our overlay doesn't pass, we can still build, it's just a little more cumbersome. And finally, the 10 acres. Or face... And finally, the 10 acres or Phase 2. There's all kinds of rumors about the 10 acres. We're going to build condos, we're going to build an amusement park. It's incredible what we're hearing from folks. But this is pretty straightforward. We went to Main Street Bank to fund the sewer force main we put in, which tied in 15 failing Title V septic systems into our city's sewer system. They wanted collateral for the loan, hence Phase 2 of the 10 acres. Of course, we have been approached by abutters and developers to sell some or all of the 10 acres. So the easy thing for us to do, right, over the last couple of years, would be to sell to a developer and recoup our losses on the sewer force main. But we haven't done that. Why? We've been approached by abutters and developers because we have no interest. As the 29 owners collectively, we would like to sell it to the city for open space. And we hope the council will support that effort sometime in the future. And I did a little research today. The city of Marlborough had the Community Preservation Act. You generate $1 to $3 million a year. That means over the last 20 years, you've lost about $20 million by not having CPA like every other city in town around us. We can do this, and we're willing to wait. We're willing to wait to preserve that open space. Or maybe our neighbors want us to sell it to a developer. We all care about Fort Meadow. Many of us have been there for decades, and we, like you, want to protect this lake for future generations. I know I do. And it's signed by the board of directors of the Red Spring Road homeowners association. All of them are here, Steve Furekia, I mean, Steve Vigent, Scott Furekia, Stephanie Furekia, and Peter Monju, and over 40 residents from Red Spring Road. We sent the council a petition this week with 229 names from across the city, including our state senator, some candidates running for council. In fact, I should mention that both potential councilor for Ward 6 Brennan, as well as Fuchilo Trey, have come out in favor of our overlay district, as I know many of the councils who are sitting here today have. We really appreciate what we're trying, we really hope that you appreciate what we're trying to do here. We're trying to protect this land, not add any more children to the school system, not bring any more traffic to Bolton Street. We want to just do what we've always done and live in peace with our neighbors across the lake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Duran, Attorney Fox. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes our presentation. Look forward to your questions. Thanks. Okay. That concludes the presentation, so we'll continue with the public hearing with public speaking in favor. Public speaking in favor. This is your chance to rise and speak. Over the microphone.
Hi, my name is Barbara Allen, A-L-L-E-N. I live at 124 Second Road in Marlborough, and I'm part of the Fort Meadow Association. I've lived there since 1989. Originally, when I heard about the overlay, I had a knee-jerk response of no, because I was worried about all of the, you know, rumors about condos on the 10 acres and all the other such. But since that time, and so I signed a petition saying, "Hold off, I'm not sure about this overlay." So I went to the, I went to the planning board meeting, saw the presentation, talked to individuals on Red Spring Road, talked to friends on Lake Shore and other neighbors, listened to the facts and the pros and the cons, and I've decided that I'm in favor of it because I think it is good for Red Spring Road, I think it's good for Fort Meadow, and I think it's good for the city of Marlborough. I think they've done their due diligence in looking at alternatives. I think this is the best alternative. I think, overall, it'll be good in terms of preservation, which I'm really concerned about, and they're doing the best they can with the situation that it is, so I'm in favor of it. And my husband asked me to put him on the record as David L. Allen in favor of it as well. So we're both in favor of the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Good evening, councilors. Gary Cato, 33 Red Spring Road. And obviously, I'm here in favor of this proposal. And just to put out to you folks that for me to build a deck, I would have to come into this room and interrupt the business of this city council for me to build a deck. Now, that sounds kind of ridiculous when we think about it. However, this overlay district will allow me just to go into the building department, present my plans, and have him approve it or make amendments to it, and I go back home and build a deck. And that's what everyone else in the city does. So what we're asking to do is treat us similar to, as you would anyone else walking into the building department. It's good policy. It makes good sense. There's not a whole lot of consideration you need to give to this. We are folks who have lived on that side of the lake. I'm a newcomer. I've only been there 20 years. There are people that have been there 30 and 50 years. All we ask is that you allow us to continue to keep that property in its same state. We're not looking to build anything. We're not, this red herring of the 10 acres that you hear about, that's a bunch of baloney. We want to live there as we have, as I have, for the past 20 years. Quiet enjoyment, that's all we ask. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Gary. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Yes, my name is Stephen Brulee. Live at 23 Red Spring Road. One of the few families, well, we've been down there since 1975, and totally for this overlay. And I want to thank the Morse family for allowing us to buy this property and keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Pamela Morse, 59 Red Spring Road, and my family has been down there for a generation, and I'm absolutely in favor of this overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Counsel, Steve Vigent, 51 Red Spring Road. I've been down there for about 35 years. It's been a while, and not much has changed down there, which is what we like, and obviously, I'm in favor of it. And I guess I'm to blame for the 10 acres because I'm the one who went to the bank. There's no other plans for that. There is actually no piece that's 10 acres. It's just part of the 50 acres. And that's what we intend to do with it. So I'd like to speak in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Pete?
My name is Peter Monjo. I'm at 19 Red Spring Road, and I'd like to speak in favor of this A2 overlay district. We've been very good stewards of this land. I've lived there for over 40 years, have grown a family there, and all we're looking for is to be treated the same as everyone else in town. This is a very simple thing. It was initiated by the city government to get us to get this in place so that we can rectify our situation, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pete.
My name is Paula Grace O'Connell. I'm at 43 Lake Shore Drive across the way. I know a number of the homeowners on Red Spring Road, and I trust them when they say that they're going to preserve this as they said, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
My name is Alex Furekia on 27 Red Spring Road. Born and raised on Fort Meadow Lake on the opposite side by Memorial Beach. Fort Meadow's my home to me. Spent a lot of my high school and college years at multiple different friends' house on Red Spring Road. About five years ago, I was lucky enough to get my own place down there. Fortunately, it's 900-square-foot cottage. Red Spring Road, I've always said, is probably the only place in Marlborough I could see myself for long term, my forever home. I mean, where else can you walk out your back door, jump in the lake, and go out your front door and be in the middle of the woods? I love it down there. You know, I plan on making it my forever home, but 900 square feet isn't going to work forever, and I hope, you know, in phases to make it my forever home. And, you know, every time I want to put on a deck, add a couple bedrooms, build a garage, I don't want to have to go through the burden of the special permit process. I don't want the city to go through the burden of it, all the abutters. It just would make everything a lot more complicated for everyone, so that's why I'm in favor of the overlay district.
Thanks, Alex.
Good evening. Neil Vigent, 53 Red Spring Road, lifelong resident. I've lived on Red Spring for 31 years. That's where I was born and raised. Just to clarify, we're here tonight because the building commissioner asked us to go through this process, not because we're trying to get away with building condos in our backyards. It's disheartening to hear that misinformation and lies were spewed to people to solicit signatures on a petition against us. Numerous people have come forth, and you just heard from one, who signed a petition based on false information, and now that they've been told the truth, they would not have signed that. So I wonder how many others there are out there. We do not want our side of the lake to ever look like Lake Shore Drive, and I could bet you that in my 2-acre exclusive use area, I have more trees than half of Lake Shore Drive, and I want to keep it that way. Just remember, whoever's trying to bring you down is already below you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Yes, my name is Heather Short. I'm at 29 Red Spring Road, but I'm also at 96 West Main Street here in Marlborough. My husband's family has owned this house for 39 years, almost 40 years, and we're one of those cottages. We have the dirt basement, we have no insulation, no heating, nothing. So it would be really nice if we were to be able to make the improvements to our property, whether it's putting on a deck, putting on a shed, whatever, the same as everybody else around us. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Heather.
My name is Dan Duran, 37 Red Spring Road. I just want to say I've been down there probably 55, 60 years. I just bought my parents' place that Dad bought back in the early '60s, and, I mean, there's still blueberry bushes across the street that we can pick. I mean, that's just how reserved the place is, and we hope to keep it that way, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi. I'm Bob Hayes. I'm in favor of the overlay district. I'm from 72, 172 Shawmat Avenue, and I also spend a lot of time down at 49 Red Spring Road. It's Nembagonka. All right.
Thank you, Bobby. Stephanie?
Stephanie Furekia, 172 Shawmat Ave. My family's owned 49 Red Spring for 30-plus years. Now that we own the land under us, we're hoping that we have the opportunity to improve the Nembagonka. We're in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Hi, I'm RJ Hawes at 35 Red Spring Road, and my wife, Michelle, and we're both in favor. I don't think we're going to do any adding on, but I know a lot of my neighbors could use some more space, so I'm in favor of it.
Thanks, RJ. Michelle?
I'm in favor also.
Thank you, Michelle.
Pat Sullivan, 55 Red Spring Road. I've owned the place for 23 years. It's my favorite place in the whole world. I love it down there, hope it never changes, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Hi, Council President Mark Evangelos, 108 Kelber Drive. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Vicki, and Jane Peters, who's lived there for 43 years. This is a good project. It's good for the city. We're preserving this, we're preserving this land. If these people didn't buy this land, who knows what could be built there? You're talking multiple condominiums everywhere. So I'm in favor and I'm in support of it, and I hope the council will be too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mark Oram. I reside at 108 Upland Road, Marlborough. I want to let you all know that I will not be acting on this in my official capacity as a city councillor. I also want you to know I have no financial interest in this matter, but I do want to speak on behalf of my neighbors because I'm a director abutter. Environmentally, I'm an environmental professional, have been most of my career. This protection of the watershed is ultimately the most important asset of this proposal. It will allow Fort Meadow to be protected from any stormwater runoff, if it's natural and kept natural. It will also support our residents, not just our residents who live on Fort Meadow, such as I do, and enjoy all the assets of Fort Meadow, but also the residents who enjoy our boat ramp, our public boat ramp, as well as Memorial Beach, which is another great asset in Marlborough. With that said, I would ask the council to support it, and I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Yes, oh, I'm sorry. One second. I forgot one item.
My apologies, Mr. President. As mentioned earlier, we did receive and officially have a petition from various Marlborough and Hudson residents in support of the proposed zoning amendment to chapter 650.
And they will be added to the portion of the public speaking in favor of the public hearing. I'm sorry. So now, questions from the public? I'm sorry. Come on up. I apologize.
Hi, Lisa Morris on Lake Shore Drive. I have a question. If during the Phase 2, the 10 acres of the development, the land is sold to the city of Marlborough for open space in the future, is that open space open to the general public?
It's a good question. It would depend upon how the land is conveyed to the city, either by a conservation restriction or a fee interest in the property. I mean, it would be a discussion between the city and the condominium association.
And then, on top of that, if it was open to the public, say like the Grove area is at the lake, is the city responsible for lighting and paving and maintaining Red Springs Road at that point?
Good question. I don't have the answer to, but I will note, the 10 acres that folks are talking about, which is common area, it's not a separate parcel, it's part of the 50 acres.
Yeah, I live across from it, so I know exactly where it is.
It doesn't have frontage on the lake. It's on the other side of Red Spring Road, so it's not along the lake. It's between Red Spring Road and neighbors to the southwest, it would be.
It's not on the water at all?
Correct. There is some common area on the water, but it's not contiguous with the 10 acres that you're talking about.
So none of the 10 acres is waterfront?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Paul?
Hi, I'm Paul Goldman from 137 Second Road. So I have a question about what this means, the overlay specifically, to the number of additional units that could be placed on the 50 acres. And this is what I understand, but I'm no zoning expert. So as I understand, the current layout of, it's one lot. It's just one continuous lot. So on one lot, you can only have one unit. You've got 29 units that are already pre-existing, grandfathered. As soon as this overlay goes into effect, the way I interpret it, and I welcome feedback, you can now put a unit on every 18,000 square feet, which is roughly 0.4 acres. So that would give about two homes or two units per acre, which, if you do the math, is about 100 units if you dense-packed it. And that's a 20% not covered because of, say, wetlands and waterways and private ways and so on. So what I see as a result of this overlay, if I understand it correctly, is that by accepting it, we are effectively allowing up to 100 units, an additional 71. Now... Now, I have no problem with them putting additional properties on there. My big concern is, with all of the elimination of the dimensional regulations, such as a hundred-and-twenty-foot linear footage along a road, which isn't specified, my concern is that they can now put in units in a way that is inconsistent with regular A-two zoning. So, my feeling generally is, is that all true, what I just said? And if the, if this overlay is, can it be amended a bit to have a minimum, a cap on the minimum number of units, such that it would comply with an A-two zoning as if it were a subdivision? I hope I made myself clear.
You want to take a shot, or you want to take that under advisement?
I will, I will attempt. We'll take a lot of it under advisement, but I will certainly attempt. So the, so the density remains the same, as you mentioned, eighteen thousand square-foot lots and thirty percent maximum lot coverage. That's the density in the A-two district, and that's the density that we would have here. The additional wrinkle here is the fact that the vast majority of the fifty-acre parcels divided up into exclusive use areas for the individual owners. And so, in order for any of that land, which is the majority of the property, for that land to be modified for additional homes, it would require the consent of all twenty-nine unit owners. And so, is it technically possible? It is technically possible. It's more unlikely now that it's a condominium form of ownership, the way it's been drawn, than it would ever be the case. And again, the existing A-two zoning, the dimensional requirements are the same in terms of density. You mentioned the change in other dimensional requirements, such as frontage and setbacks. And the purpose of doing that, it was as surgical as I could be, to make changes to, when drafting the overlay district, to make changes to the A-two zoning only as necessary to render both the parcel and the structures conforming. The parcel's got fifty acres, it has almost no frontage at all. And so, the entire parcel is pre-existing non-conforming. So even if we did away with internal setbacks, which we've done here, if we don't do anything about frontage, the parcel's still non-conforming, and we'd still have to go through the special permit process. So, the changes to the A-two district that are in the overlay district are only there for the purpose of making the existing structures and the existing parcel conforming.
But it does, in effect, allow now more units to be put on that property, which is not the case right now. Am I correct?
I don't believe it does, because the density is still the same. The A-two density is still there. So what could be done with that fifty-acre parcel, had the condo association not been formed, and the unit owners bought it, and it was sent for development? It could have been developed under A-two zoning anyway. Quite honestly, it's harder at this point, in my opinion, to do any additional development on that property now, because it's divided into exclusive use areas, where these twenty-nine unit owners have to say something if that exclusive use area is going to change.
But, for example, you've got this ten acres that is undeveloped. What it sounds to me is, if this goes through, if you do the math on ten times two, you can put twenty units in there to increase the size of the condominium structure, if they wanted to. It's up to them. But I mean, it, that sounds very feasible, if that's a decision they wanted to make.
So the ten acres you're talking about could be developed as a subdivision, but you'd have to go through the planning board's subdivision approval process in order to do that. You'd have to build out a way, which we currently don't have, to the planning board's standards or seek waivers. So it's really, in my opinion, it's no easier now than it would have been the case had we never done the overlay district, or had we never done the condominium. With a condominium form of ownership, it's much harder to do much, at all.
So, Paul, your question is a good one. Give the council something to think about. I'm sure Chair Robey has it to understand what, basically, what are the unintended consequences of the overlay.
Exactly. You know, because I personally have worked with the people at Red Spring Road. I am so thankful that they purchased this land, and it wasn't going to developer. And I wish these people could be around forever, because I do believe in their conservation mantra. But I'm thinking, you know, ten years down the road, that property becomes more valuable. Now, they are given, in a, the ability, because of changing the lot, being one lot, now it can conform and take on many more units, and it's giving that opportunity. I realize there's twenty-nine people that have to make a decision, but ten years, twenty years from now, when we're talking about big bucks, I'm not sure what that means. So that's my concern. If it could be developed just like A-two zoning, great. And that's where I think a cap might be something to consider.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kaczmarec from seventy-nine Second Road. I want to actually compliment that, so I live on the other side of the lake, and a couple of weeks ago, we actually all came together, kind of voicing our concern about another development on this lake. My wife and I bought this property ten years ago. We're very lucky this day. We're both, my wife is a schoolteacher, I'm an engineer, we probably couldn't buy it. We were extremely lucky. And I love the fact that we've all come together, and we care about this prop, this whole area. It's beautiful, you know? Who would have thought, in such a random kind of spot, off of four-ninety-five? But it's also a, it has a bullseye on it, you know? There's, it's not a secret, the property by Boston Scientific has a bullseye on it. And my, my, I guess, concern, you can say, is, I'm not here to make it difficult for someone to put up a shed or a deck, like, come on, you know? But earlier this year in June, at the Fort Meadow Association, Bob and a couple of other gentlemen came to our meeting to kind of talk about this situation, which I appreciated. And it was at that meeting that Bob himself mentioned putting up the ten acres, which is being utilized as a collateral for the loan, perfectly understandable, as green space. And I was like, great, I, I don't see the problem here. But since then, unfortunately, Bob himself has made comments about, well, we could sell it to a developer. You said it tonight, in front of everybody. And that, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, you said, Bob.
And, and that's, with all due respect, that's where the concern lies. So here we are, four months later, since the meeting at the Fort Meadow Association Clubhouse. I apologize, I'm a little bit nervous. And I'd like to know, is there any formal activity in writing to the Marlborough Conservation Commission, or any other conservation group stating your position to sell off the ten acres as green space?
So I'm reminded from Mr. Duran that the ten-acre area is going to be on the city's open space master plan, which means targeting areas that would be good for open space acquisition. Beyond that, every meeting and every hearing I've been at, that I've been listening to, we've been saying over and over again, that's our plan. It, you know, the ball, once this goes through, ball will largely be in the city's court in terms of doing that, but that's what we intend to do.
Of course. But here, the plan is not so, there is no long-term plan. This is kind of to, kind of, I guess, go with Paul's question, is, we're not concerned about your plan a year from now, two years from now. We're talking five, ten-plus years. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. My name's Pete Sharon. I'm at ninety-five Lake Shore Drive. And like everyone else that was up here, I've been there for just about sixty-five to seventy years. So we love the lake, just like everyone that spoke. And I want to thank you, Bob, for the acknowledgement. You know, you really did a good job on that. But everything you guys all said tonight, we would support one-hundred percent. The, the only issue with it is, is what Paul told, brought up, is, you know, in five, ten, fifteen years from now, I'm going to be dead. My kids might be here, but, you know, what can happen? And we want to get this kind of thing straightened out. So one of the big questions is, with all the communication you've done around here, Bob, you've mentioned to everybody, there is no plans for development, no plans. And I've heard it all night, no plans for development. And we support that one-hundred percent, every one of us across the lake. And oh, by the way, we do only have five thousand square-foot lots, we don't have fifty thousand, so you do have a nice value there. But anyhow, with no plans for development, this brings up the big question, why do we even need an overlay district? Why do we need it? Now we're talking about additions, decks, this, additions for a deck, addition for a extra room, or you want to rip down a house, tear down a, I've been building on that lake for years, on the beach, by the way, that you acknowledged me for. And I have had to pull special permits for everything. So you're no different than us, at all. So special permits have to be pulled when you're non-conforming. And you're still going to be non-conforming when you do all this, because you've got five to six lots that aren't thirty feet away from the water, and conservation overrules everything. So you will never get that site totally non-conforming, like your documents all say. And I'm sorry if I'm getting a little loud, because my mouth is getting a little dry, because Bob gets me riled up. But anyhow, so you'll never be conforming, just like the other side of the lake. We will never be conforming. Every house over there, sixty-five to seventy percent of the homes on Lake Shore Drive are non-conforming, grandfathered in, every one of them. I know the, I know the zoning, I've done it, I've been over there, they're all non-conforming. So I feel bad for you, but we have to go for special permits. Why shouldn't you? Why should you be able to go to your own committee and get approval and go to a building inspector? We have to go with a set of prints. And I have a solution. I don't always come with problems. Part of the solution is, you've got a beautiful, beautiful set of ASBILs. You haven't shown them anywhere in any of these rooms. I haven't seen them yet. You've got a beautiful set of ASBILs, and they're from McClure Engineering. They're excellent. They have all your, what do they call them, exclusive use areas, beautifully drawn out, all the borders, everything, everything that you would need for a site division. Yes, some of your lots are non-conforming, but at least it would give conservation, it would give the building inspector a tool in order to measure off for your side lots. Why should you have zero setbacks? Why? Why zero setbacks? You've got more, you've got acre lots over there. We've got fifty thousand square feet.
So Pete, Pete, you're three minutes, you're on your three minutes. Do you have the stuff written down that you can give to the urban?
Not as good as that. I've kind of ablied some of the stuff. But anyhow, because they got me riled up a little bit. But anyhow, Bob, I want to thank you very much for the acknowledgement. We've been friends for a long time. There's no need to be, lose a friendship in any of this room with anybody, because I support everything you guys want to do. No buildings over there, no additional condos, that's great. I love to hear that stuff. It's music for my ears. But you know what? There's not a document that says that. The documents allow you to do the opposite. This gentleman just brought it up. So that's my, that's the biggest point I got. And I will give you some documents for the minutes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete. Any other, okay, come on, folks, come on. Bruins play tomorrow night at seven o'clock in Chicago. You can clap for them. Any other members of the public with questions? Yes, well, hang on, Paul, I got to see if anybody else, anyone else with questions before I let Paul go one more time. Hearing none, Paul, floor is yours.
I had a question about special permits. You know, I definitely don't want that, for every little thing, to be coming in front of the city council for that. I get it. But, couple of thoughts. One is, it seems to me that these people, and I know they've lived there a long time, probably have a pretty good idea of what they would like to do, I'm going to say in the next year or two, whatever. Is there a way, as a condo association, where they could put their heads together and say, hey, now, I'm going to put in a deck, I'm going to put in a shed, I'm going to put in a garage, consolidate this, maybe even on a yearly basis, and present that as a special permit? Therefore, yes, you've got to send it out to the neighbors, but they reduce their individual cost, and they get the job done. That's one thing. And the other is, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, how many special permits are we even talking about, that we're creating a whole overlay to do this? I mean, are we talking about ten? Are we talking about fifteen? I mean, I don't have a sense of the magnitude of the problem that we're trying to solve with the overlay, if it's special permits. And if we can combine them, hey, that may be a good way to, you know, just continually improve the system. So that's, I don't know how that works, I'm not a special permit expert, but I would like your thoughts on, on those subjects.
Sure. So, in my opinion, virtually anything you do to any of these structures would require a special permit, because you have multiple single-family homes on one lot, which violates the zoning ordinance, no matter how you cut it, and that's not permissible in the A-two district. So every single one of these structures is pre-existing non-conforming on this lot. Changes to those structures would require what they call a Section Six finding special permit, for a pre-existing non-conforming structure to be modified. Other lots and other undersized parcels, the neighborhood across the way, but really anywhere in the city, in my opinion, there's more you could do without a Section Six finding special permit, within the envelope of your, of your building, even adding on, as long as you're not adding new violations. If you can, if you can do an addition within the existing setback, even if you're pre-existing non-conforming, you can usually get away with not having to get a special permit. I don't think that would work here, because every single structure is pre-existing non-conforming, because of the parcel and the way it's built out. So that, that is the concern, is that there's really not much that these folks can do that doesn't require a Section Six finding special permit. And because of the lot's size, we're triggering notice to a hundred-and-forty-eight individual owners for every little thing. And we just don't think, even if you, could you consolidate them and say, we're going to apply for one special permit every year, to look at all these different changes? I suppose you could. It seems like a waste of a lot of people's time and money to do that, for changes that virtually nobody else will see anywhere in the city.
And if someone were to change their, their house, but stay on the same footprint, like a house that's being built on that right now, they don't need a special permit for that, correct? If they keep the same footprint? So if they take down a deck and put it back the same, but just it's, it's new structure, but it's the same footprint?
Within the exact footprint, I believe that that is correct, yes. The issue is, a lot of these structures are, as was mentioned tonight, quite small, because they were developed as cabins, and now folks are looking to make them, now that they actually own the land underneath their homes, they're looking to make changes to improve them, to make them last longer. And that's where they're running into this problem, where virtually anything that most people would do with those homes requires a special permit, notifying a hundred-and-forty-eight other people, and having a hearing like this.
And do you have any sense of how many special permits we're talking about?
I have no idea. It depends on what, what the structure owners wanted to do. It's, you know, twenty-nine different sets of decisions in terms of what they do with their property over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else that has not spoken? Pete?
Just a couple of follow-up questions to Paul. Brian, with regards to the special permits, I have, I have, I've had a conversation with the building inspector, I've had a conversation with conservation. Their biggest complaint is they have no, they have no boundaries or barriers to go by for any measurements. They have nothing. You have a beautiful site plan, beautiful. That thing is better than half the ones that are being submitted to the building department for building permits. And it has all the dimensional, it has the, all the lines that you guys have degreed on, where your lot lines, it has everything. It's beautiful. It's gorgeous. I think with that, has anybody talked to the building inspector in conservation? Because they need some boundaries to go by. They've got measurements. You're never going to get around the thirty-foot from the lake. That's always going to be a requirement. And that, you don't even mention that in any of the, any of your documents. It's a thirty-foot setback from the lake. You can't get away from it. Bob, you know that.
And we're not attempting to with the zoning amendment. And I, I have provided copies of plan you're referencing to the building commissioner and the conservation officer. They have access to that plan. I've sent them a copy by email, so they have it in electronic form, showing all the exclusive use areas. That plan's also recorded at the registry of deeds, so anyone can download it whenever they want.
The, the one from McClure?
Correct.
Okay. Are those being, is that being used for the current building permits that are out there?
It, it, well, first of all, there are no building permits being issued now, because the building commissioner has said...
Well, there is too. We're building a house down there right now. There's a building permit out on it.
Building commissioner has, has told us they're not issuing any new permits until this zoning issue is resolved, one way or the other.
They just issued one, they're building a house down there. And then, six months ago, they built an addition down there, or a year ago. So it's going on right now, without these special permits that you keep referring to. That's my whole point. I think it's... I think it's a big blown-up thing that it isn't as big as you're making it out to be. That's my only point. I think there's a way around it where, I've worked with the city members a long time. There's a way around these issues without putting an overlay on 50 acres of land. That's, that's, that's a lot of, it's crazy to do that, in my opinion. That's just, you know.
Thank you. Thanks, Pete. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Paul?
Again, I want to emphasize that I think we're very lucky to have the owners of the homes of Red Spring to be the ones that purchased this land. And I hope to, I've worked with them on many environmental issues in the past. I look forward to doing it in the future. I have a letter that I would like to get to the city council. And basically, my, I've asked my questions. My main concern of this is not that it's evil or anything. I just want to make sure that there is a building cap on this overlay, an addition, that ensures that it's no different than if it were an A2-zoned property. That's basically it. Because I believe they have every right to add buildings to it. I just don't want it to be dense-packed as a result of the reduction in what I understand as the dimensional regulations. So that's basically what I have in this letter. I do appreciate the answers I've gotten today. They kind of answered some of my questions, but I still think that this is a very important point to be considered before this overlay is approved. Otherwise, I'm very thankful that they're going to keep it as pristine as it's been.
Thank you, Paul. Karen, give it to John. John will bring it up. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Lindsay Kading. I live in Marlboro. I grew up on Lake Shore Drive. I oppose the overlay. I agree with everything everyone said, but I think there's something missing from what's out there. And, you know, I think there's some wording that needs to be added. And I would like to add that I'm really disheartened by the fact that people asking questions and trying to get to the answers and do something good is being called misinformation. That is very upsetting to me, because people just want to understand what's going on, and I think that's all of our right to do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lindsay. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Pete?
Thank you. I'm going to basically use the same letter I've been using. This has been signed off by, and I know you guys have a big one signed off also in favor, which is great. But we've had around 140, 150 people sign up this thing, and it basically supports this. And I'll read it, it'll take two seconds. It's only a few paragraphs. Mike, I promise you...
You have your three minutes, Pete.
I promise you. "We oppose the proposed Red Spring Road Overlay District because it doesn't show benefit to the city or lake area residents. The Red Spring Road Overlay District request appears to be a blank check for development by eliminating boundary conditions that pertain to A2 zoning. While the recent, while the request suggests that dealing with pre-existing non-conforming homes in the region, is a reason for granting the overlay, the fact is, many lake residents have dealt with these same situations without eliminating dimensional zoning standards as indicated in the 650-50 Red Spring Overlay District request. No plans or discussions have been heard on the potential impact of the overlay of the lake area of Phase 2, which is the 10-acre parcel adjacent." And I will footnote, today, we did hear a little bit. This was the first time, again, this document's been out since the planning board and previous meetings. So we did hear a little on the 10-acre. Lastly, based on the current assessed records, Bob, and this goes back to 2023, that's what we have, and that's all we have available, it appears there's no equity in the condo property tax structure with residents on or around the lake, although we all share the same lake frontage and a lot less of it in some areas. The undersign on this document, which I'll give to the secretary here, is all signed. But I appreciate the time, and again, I want to emphasize, we do support everything you want to do. We just don't see, there's a reason for an overlay for 50 acres for a lousy little building permit issue. Those things, if we can't work that as a city with $181 million budget, if we can't work out that issue without creating an overlay, we've got a sad situation here. So that's, I want to let you all know, we do support you guys adding on, doing building construction, whatever you need to do over there to make ends meet. But we don't, we don't believe it requires any kind of an overlay for 50 acres. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you remind me again how many butters, you said the number, for people need to be notified with special permit hearing? What was the number again, please?
Yep, so the 400-foot butters list, my count, 119 owners beyond the 29-unit owners who would also get notice. So 148 in total.
Councilor Perlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to appreciate all the comments in the presentation as well. I'm just curious, I know in other instances, like, it makes a lot of sense here not to have to notify all the butters, certainly the open space preservation. It should be something the city does. In the future iterations of this in Urban Affairs, what additional information will be provided to the council to kind of tease this out further?
Sure. So I can make sure council, the city has a copy of this map that's been referred to, which shows all the exclusive use areas. I can certainly bring that in for Urban Affairs. That may be helpful for folks to see. But beyond that, you know, we're open to a request for information, but that, I mean, that's the main data point I think people might want to see.
Okay. I think it might be helpful, too, to have maybe a more zoomed-in version of this particular area, given the maps. I think it was really helpful. I know until many years ago, I didn't even know Red Spring Road existed, because it's sort of a hidden gem. So certainly having some more specifics about the area, I think, would help the council better assess this particular project. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Perlman. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Fock, I would have a couple of clarifying questions on the draft that we have on page 2, under the use regulations. The very last notation is, "All use is not specified in subsection D1 and subsection D2 above shall be deemed prohibited." I don't see any subsections. Are you quoting from the code, and these are parts of that? Or should there be a subsection listing?
It's intended to reference subsections within that existing article. So if I can, if I can put clearer verbiage in there, I'll certainly happy to do that. But I was intending to reference the notes above, not anywhere else in the ordinance in that section.
Okay. And then, in the dimensional regulations, there's a minimum lot area of 18,000 square feet. But within the SRS, each principal building located within an exclusive use area of at least 8,000 square feet. So what's the difference between an exclusive use area that's 8,000 and the minimum lot area of 18,000?
Sure. So minimum lot area would be a separate building lot under the zoning, which in the A2, that's the minimum size, 18,000 square feet. 8,000-square-foot exclusive use area, that's the smallest exclusive use area that we have in this condominium association. So the purpose there was to give some clarity in terms of, okay, if we're going to allow multiple single families on one parcel, can they be anywhere? What are the requirements? And what we came up with is, they have to be on an exclusive use area, one for themselves. And we came up with a minimum size, which happens to be the smallest. Many of the exclusive use areas in this condominium association are much larger than that. But that happens to be the smallest, and so that's the one we use to show that's the minimum size exclusive use area. But an exclusive use area would not be a zoning lot. It's not intended to be. It's just an area where that unit owner essentially has a yard, and they can do what they want within the requirements of the condominium association's rules.
But aren't you really asking us to ignore the fact that there's a minimum lot area if there's no lot lines and there's no setbacks?
Within the portion that would be subject to a homeowners association, a condominium, yes.
All right. And I guess it was brought up about how much you can build. It is specified that you have the 30% lot coverage. So that would, then, I guess we would need to know what the current lot coverage is, to know how much more you can build out, so if you can provide that.
Yeah, it's approximately 5% right now.
Okay. All right. And again, I don't know what the planning board did this evening, if they're going to hold over, they're deciding until their next meeting. But once we hear from them, we will bring this to committee for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Roby. Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Attorney Fock?
Thank you very much.
Members of the public, thank you for your patience of hanging in here tonight. Thank you very much. We'll take a two-minute recess to clear the chambers and pick up the agenda. Councils back in session at 10:40. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from Councils Ossing and Wagner regarding municipal aggregation September 2023 update.
Councilor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The letter as mentioned is included, but I would like to highlight some important information that was included in the letter sent to council. First, Marlboro residential electricity users participating in the municipal aggregate program saved over $2 million in the second quarter for 2023, and it's estimated that $1 million will be saved in the third quarter for 2023. The Inspire contract, which is our current contract right now, has saved Marlboro residents, residential electricity users participating in the program over $17 million since its inception in 2019. And even more amazing, since we began municipal aggregation program, this program in 2007, we've saved residents $30 million in their electricity costs. Participants in the municipal aggregation program will be notified in November that we are coming to the end of our current contract, and we have entered into a new, a new contract with a new energy supplier with First Point Power. So this new contract will take effect as of February 2024, and will have a rate of 14.15 cents, which is a little higher per kilowatt, but it's for 22 months. Things have changed a lot since we began the Inspire contract some years back, but this new rate is still significantly less than the current national grid basic service winter rate, which is 18.213 cents per kilowatt hour. The municipal aggregation program continues to save Marlboro residents money on their electricity bill, which is our charge, and I'm happy to be part of the tremendous work that's being done to save our residents significant money. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the letter, accept and place on file the letter, the municipal aggregation letter.
Motion made in second, accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Orm.
First and foremost, thank you for your efforts, Councilor Wagner, Councilor, President Ossing. Just, it says here that we're still going to be 100% national, national wind renewable energy with the newer contract.
That is correct, Councilor.
Thank you. That's great. That's great news. Thank you. Thank you both for your efforts.
Any other discussion on the motion, accept and place on file? Before I take the vote, I want to recognize Council Wagner's efforts. For the last two years she's been on the committee, she's saved the resident users $15 million. So, Council Wagner, thank you very much. On the motion to accept and place on file, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance of a metal bench from the friends of Robert F. Case, which has been placed at Memorial Beach.
Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the gift, please.
Motion made in second to approve the gift. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It carries 10-01? 10? Just carries 10-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of temporary appointment pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 61A of David R. Williams as Comptroller-Treasurer, effective October 4th, 2023, for a 60-day term to expire December 3rd, 2023.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of extension of temporary appointment pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 61A of Theodore L. Scott as interim commissioner to the Department of Public Works for an additional 60-day term to expire on December 20th, 2023.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Orm.
Just quickly, I just want to be, I'm very thankful that we have Mr. Ted Scott acting as the acting commissioner, and hopefully he's been fantastic to work with through the years, and hopefully he'll be considered for the full commission job someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orm. Any other discussion on the motion? Motion to accept and place on file, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding the application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Post Road Realty LLC to construct a multifamily and commercial project in the Executive Residential Overlay District, which consists of 475 residential units, 4,800 square feet of commercial space at Simarano Drive and Cedar Hill Street, in proper legal form, order number 23-108952B.
Councilor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. A move to accept and place on file the communication from Assistant City Solicitor McManus, and to move the special permit information to number 19.
Motion made in second to file the communication and move this item to Agenda Item 19. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's filed and going to Agenda Item 19, 11-0. Agenda item 13.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Kerrigan regarding the municipal election call.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the clerk to please read the election call and move to accept and place on file the communication.
The solicitor.
Oh, I've been promoted. Look at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk. City Clerk Bean is hereby authorized and directed to warn and notify the voters of the city of Marlboro duly qualified to vote in the municipal election to assemble in their respective polling places as designated by the city council as follows. Ward 1, Precinct 1 and 2, the Francis J. Kane School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 2, Precincts 1 and 2, Francis J. Kane School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 3, Precinct 1, the Senior Center, 40 New Street. Ward 3, Precinct 2, Raymond J. Richards School, 80 Foley Road. Ward 4, Precinct 1 and 2, the Senior Center at 40 New Street. Ward 5, Precincts 1 and 2, at Masonic Lodge, 8 Newton Street. Ward 6, Precincts 1 and 2, at the First Lieutenant Charles Whitcomb School, 25 Union Street. Ward 7, Precinct 1 and 2, at the Hildre school at 85 Sawen Street. On Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, then and there, for the purpose of casting the votes for the candidates for the following offices. Mayor, Councilors-at-Large, Ward Counselors, Wards 1 through 7, School Committee members, Nassau Valley School Committee member. It is further ordered that the polling place legally designated by the city council be open at 7:00 in the forenoon and close at 8:00 in the evening. The city clerk being is hereby authorized to cause notice of this, to be given by publication of this order in a local newspaper and by posting a copy of same and conspicuous place in the office of the city clerk.
On the motion to accept and place on file the election call, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Communication from the Board of Regist, Board of Registitors of Voters regarding a request to authorize in-person early voting for the municipal preliminary election pursuant to Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve.
Motion made in second to approve the Board of Registitors so we'll have early voting as the hours specified in the letter. Any discussion on the motion? Council Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the clerk also read those hours into the record?
Pursuant to Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, the Board of Registitors vote to approve the following schedule. Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, October 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 1st, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, November 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And finally, Friday, November 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Would you repeat that one more time?
Want me to repeat that one more time?
Yes.
Okay, one more time.
Specifying that there's no Sunday, I just wanted to make sure.
There is no, no, no Sunday hours were authorized, so Saturday, the 28th, and then Monday through Friday, October 30th through November 3rd. These will be posted on the city website. I'm going to ask them, have them on Facebook, and we will have them posted in numerous locations throughout the city.
Is that good? Anything? Council Roby.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the Board of Registitors for doing this. I know in the past, the clerk just got to do it, and so it, the law got changed, so I'm glad that we will be able to do this for this election and hopefully going forward for others. So I hope the council will approve this tonight.
Yeah, so we did do it for the municipal election two years ago, but that was all under the auspices of the city clerk. They changed the rules.
And if I, and I don't mean to belabor this, but for next year's elections, any state or federal election, it is required under Massachusetts General Law, the registrars or the clerk have no say in it. It is required under the law. It's only for municipal elections that we can opt in for in-person early voting.
So on the motion to approve the early voting with the hours specified in the letter, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, early voting is approved, 11-0. Agenda item, where are we? 15.
Communication from the town of Northborough regarding notification of a hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to a project at 440 West Main Street, Northborough.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Item 16.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Our motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Minutes are filed 11-0. Item 17.
Claims.
Councilor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer the claims to the legal department.
Motion made in second to refer the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the claims are going to a legal, 11-0. Reports of committee, we'll start with Ellen L.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee met on Monday, October 16th. We convened at 8:10 p.m. as there were various committees prior. We had one item on our agenda, order number 23-108962, proposed easement for a parcel of land at South Bolton and Main Street, map 70, parcel 126. In addition to a gift acceptance from the Marlboro Historical Society, we had Attorney Doug Rowe with us, and he gave a presentation about the Marlboro Historical Society's proposal, which would cover the legacy of Samuel Boyd. This would be a statue that was designed and commissioned by an artist who was from Marlboro, who had also commissioned the Shoe Workers Monument that many folks know downtown. Samuel Boyd is a historic figure in our community. He opened the city's first shoe manufacturing business and grew the community to 13,000 residents. We had a series of questions from the council about clarification on the location, about reconfiguration of the corner at the site, and Attorney Rowe did share that it would take a long time to build, given the city's construction schedule, and they would be accommodating of that. He shared that the statue would mirror the bronze material of the Shoe Workers Monument, and they want the statue to be above ground. We asked for clarification on the design. He mentioned the sketch that we were provided was only an example. And then on a motion sec, by Councilor Orm, seconded by Chair Pearlman, the committee did approve the order, which was both the proposed easement and the gift acceptance, on a vote of 3-0. And then on a motion by Councilor Orm, seconded by the chair, we adjourned at 8:24 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pearlman. And I will reflect, record reflect that Council Landis recused himself from participating in this item. Sorry about that, Council Landis. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Housing Committee met on Monday, October 16th. We had one item on our agenda. Order number 23-108979, a request for the city council approval of a master sign plan for various internally illuminated wall and freestanding signs for the Green Gold Group Medical and Adult Use Marijuana Facility at 9:10, Boston Post Road East, within the Wayside Zoning District. The chair opened the meeting, reading the letter from Building Commissioner Tway delineating the current signage, what's allowed in the Wayside District, what the sign plan proposes, and what the applicant is seeking relief for. My understanding is that what he said was that their business will have more than two wall signs, and two of the three signs will be internally illuminated. Council Dusset pointed out that there was an error in the letter, which I have asked to have corrected and have not yet received a corrected copy. Council Wagner, move to approve a sign above the main entrance, a sign on the corner of building facing Big Apple Deli, and what is described as a bonus area wall sign on the building facing Route 20, all internally lit. Motion received a second. Council Dusset moved to amend the motion to require the signs be turned off when the business is closed. The motion received a second. So the amendment to turn off the signs carried, and then the amended motion to recommend approval with the signs being turned off also carried. The amendment carried four to one with Landis voting no, and the final vote was four to one with Council Navin voting no. I do understand from a communication from the Green Gold Group that the CCC does actually require all marijuana facilities to turn off their lights when they're not in business. So it's nice to know, but we will make sure that they do it with this language. I am asking for suspension tonight to be able to vote on the sign permit so they can move forward. Thank you.
Chair's asked for suspension of the rules to take this out of committee. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? Carries 11-0. Council Roby.
Move the recommendation of committee to have the sign.
Speaker.
Move to recommend the motion, the committees, move the recommendation of committee to approve the signs.
Motion made in second to move the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve the signs. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. President, so I did talk to you, the commissioner, today about the signs. I do not have the wording in front of me, but effectively, there's a phrase of basically the back illuminated signs are not allowed unless otherwise, you know, not, if there's any alternative, it can still be used. Forget the actual phrasing for it, but there, it, you, it does allow, in some cases, back illuminated signs within the Wayside District. You know, the wording basically says, don't use them unless there's no other choice, but there's, it's allowing other choices. And if I, I don't have the phrase in here, but it was pointed to me by the inspector this afternoon. So, just to clarify the point that I brought up that I misspoke as far as the correction, I'm correcting myself.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other, any other comments on the motion to approve the sign ordinance, or sign changes, rather? Hearing none on the motion to approve the illuminated signs for Green Gold. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed? One, two, three. The chair voted in favor of it, they approved 8-3. It is approved. 8-3 is the vote. Agenda item 18.
Order number 23-108950B, petition of Mass. Electric in Verizon to install a new joint-owned pole on High Street approximately 300 feet east of the center line of the intersection of High Street and Bolton Street, and to install a new manhole and underground conduit for the new pole to the new manhole in the existing transformer 1-2 on Exchange Street.
Council Landis.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve the petition for Mass. Electric. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the petition is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 19.
Order number 23-108952B, application for a special per, permit for Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Post Road Realty LLC to construct the multifamily and commercial project in the Executive Residential Overlay District, which will consist of 475 residential units, 4,800 square feet of commercial space, 754 parking spaces, open space landscaping, and walking trails at Simarano Drive, Cedar Hill Street, and Green District Boulevard. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve. I will point out that the letter from Assistant City Solicitor is that the quantum vote is six.
Motion made in second to approve the special permit for Green District Phases 3 and 4. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and zoning ordinance of the city of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to build and operate a two-phase mixed-use project with 475 residential units and commercial space as shown on the site plan, subject to the following conditions, which conditions shall be binding on the applicant and successors and/or assigns. One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the city of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the site plan as may be amended during site plan review. Two, site plan review. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review by the city council in accordance with Section 65036 of the zoning ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit. Subsequent site plan review shall be consistent with the conditions of this special permit and the site plan submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city council as a special permit granting authority. Any changes, any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions of this special permit and conditions attached to the building permit, and a final occupancy permit shall not be issued until the applicant has complied with all the conditions, provided, however, that the subsequent, subsequent to the issuance of the special permit, the site plan approval of the site plan review committee may authorize the phasing of the, of site and building work depending upon weather conditions and other factors. In accordance with Section 65036H of the zoning ordinance, the building commissioner may approve minor modifications to the special permit and the site plan. Three, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application and as amended, and as amended or revised during the application hearing process before the city council and or the city council's Urban Affairs Committee are herein incorporated into and become part of this special permit and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the city council. The final architectural design of the site shall be reasonably consistent with the site plan submitted by the applicant. The final exterior features of the site, including landscaping, shall be maintained in good condition and shall be reasonably consistent with the site plan submitted and representations made to the city council. Four, stormwater erosion control management. The applicant shall ensure its site superintendent during construction of the project is competent in stormwater and erosion control management. This individual's credentials shall be acceptable to the Engineering Division of the city's Department of Public Works and the city's Conservation Commission. This individual shall be responsible for checking the site before, during, and after storm events, including weekends and evenings when storms are predicted. This individual shall ensure that no untreated stormwater leaves the site consistent with the state's and city's stormwater regulations. This individual shall ensure compliance with all approved sequence of construction plan and the approved erosion control plan. The applicant shall grant this individual complete authority of the site as it relates to stormwater and erosion controls. Five, affordable units. A, 10% of the dwelling units at the site shall be made available as rental units at affordable prices to renters whose annual income does not exceed 80% of the area median income adjusted for family size as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in perpetuity or the longest period allowed by state law. The affordable units, in accordance with the provisions of Section 65026 of the zoning ordinance and the, and this condition, the affordable housing units shall comply with all requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for any unit within the use, the applicant, in coordination with the city and the Community Development Authority, shall file all required submissions to EOHLC for inclusion of the affordable housing units on the SHI, and shall diligently take any action, take all actions necessary to include the affordable housing units on the SHI without any, without limitations, preparing and executing a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants and/or any other restrictive instruments necessary to ensure compliance with said zoning ordinance and this condition, a marketing plan, and all other required documentation. All costs associated with complying with this condition, including but not limited to the EOHLC process, recording of all documents with registry of deeds, and the marketing plan for this, for the affordable units shall be borne by the applicant. B, in lieu of requiring the 15% of the dwelling units at the site be made available at affordable prices to renters, the applicant shall provide a payment to the city of $50,000 per affordable unit, affordable dwelling unit that would have been otherwise required under Section 65026 of the zoning ordinance. For Phase 3 of this use, of the use, the number of applicable units is 12 for a to, for a total payment of $600,000. For Phase 4 of the use, the number of applicable units is 12 for a total payment of $600,000. The payment for Phase 3 required by this condition shall be made prior to the issuance of the building permit for Phase 3, and payment for Phase 4 shall be made prior to the issuance of the building permit for Phase 4, and the payment shall be deposited into the West Side Fire Station Stabilization Account, 83600-32900. Six, Green District Boulevard relocation. As part of the site plan review, the applicant shall provide revised plans showing a relocation of Green District Boulevard in the vicinity of Phase 3 to reduce impacts on wetland buffer zone areas. As part of the relocation, as part, as part of that relocation, the applicant shall evaluate the viability of parking decks in Phase 3 to further reduce impacts on wetland buffer zones, and shall provide an updated fire apparatus access anal, analysis. Seven, crosswalk installation. Not later than the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for Phase 4 of the use, the applicant shall have a crosswalk installed across Simarano Drive, connecting to the sidewalk along Cedar Hill Street. The crosswalk work shall include ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps and pedestrian signals that are integrated into the existing traffic signal equipment. Eight, drainage assessment. As part of the site plan review, the applicant shall conduct an assessment of existing drainage issues along the property line between Phase 4 and the Cedar Hill Street, incorporating such assessment into the site's overall site stormwater management design. Nine, green design. The applicant shall utilize best practices to design energy-efficient buildings, and shall design buildings and accessory structures to accommodate accessory solar energy facilities and/or other technologies. The applicant shall use best efforts to provide all electric utilities contingent upon the utility company being able to commit to such service during the project's ordinary construction timeline. Ten, parking data. As part of the site plan review, the applicant shall provide up-to-date parking data from Phase 1 of the site, such and, such as the number of units currently occupied and the average number of parking spaces being utilized per day, to assist the city council with the review of Phase 3 and Phase 4. Eleven, Conservation Commission approval. The applicant shall obtain and comply with an order of conditions from the city's Conservation Commission. Twelve, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances that may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Recording of the decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant at its expense shall record the special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified the 20-day period for appealing the special permit has elapsed and no appeal having been filed, and before the applicant is applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the city council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office. to the city council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office.
I'm going to check that. Oh, yeah, I'll check that. Okay, councilors, you've heard the conditions. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the special permit. Any final comments? Councilor Orm.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke about this at the Urban Affairs Committee as well. I have a hard time not supporting the halfway point, it really wasn't a halfway point, on affordable housing. I respect the fact that money goes to the West Side Fire Station, but we have other ways we can raise money as well. So with that said, affordable housing weighing it out to a West Side Fire Station, I don't believe the West Fire, it's, West Side Fire Station is going to really cost one point two million. It's going to be more. Obviously, this helps, but we're going to need to raise more money than that, obviously, and I respect the fact that we're trying to raise it as best we can. And I have other ideas. I think we can be raising money in other ways. But with that said, I can't support it, even though I will say I respect the developer. He's done a great job in the past. I know he'll do a great job with this subdivision that he's planning the additional four hundred and seventy-five units, but because of the affordable, affordable housing reduction, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the special permit, a no vote is to deny the special permit. Mr. Kerrigan. Council Roby.
Yes.
Council Dusset.
Yes.
Council Orm.
No.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Irish.
No.
Council Ossing.
Yes.
Council Landis.
Yes.
Council Dumas.
Yes.
Council Navin.
Yes.
Council Wagner.
Yes.
And Council Pearlman.
Yes.
Nine in favor, two opposed. The city council approves a special permit for the Green District Phases three and four with a vote of nine in favor and two opposed. Council Dumas.
Move to adjourn, please.
Motion made and second to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned at eleven oh eight. Thank you.